We thank you for directing our minds, directing our hearts, and encouraging us with your strength. Why we ask that in this meeting tonight, that you direct us with your love, your strength, and the dedication to do those things that are necessary for the safety, the welfare, and the growth of this city. Why we ask that even in our disagreement, that you help us to agree. This prayer we pray in your moral and righteous way, thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
So, it's coming, Commissioner Barnett, since she was...
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, county council members.
Good evening.
Citizens of Proust, new visitors and friends. Tonight, I just want to come and say a little bit, we know it's voting time. And first, I ask that you all do vote, because it's important that we do. Because if we don't do our part, we cannot expect anyone else to do theirs. The second thing I want to speak to you on is home rule. For the past few weeks, I've talked to several of the citizens in reference to the home rule situation. And some agree, some don't agree, some like it, some love it, and some don't. But I ask you that you be governed by your own mind. This is your opportunity to do what you do. But I do say this, sometimes, we take a good thing in the hopes of making the perfect thing, and we risk a, we risk the chance of losing it all. So, many have said that one concern that there is the timing. Ladies and gentlemen, citizens, friends, if we look just east of us, and if we've been reading our papers lately, you see that the City of Waller are starting an annexing process. And they made it perfectly clear that they're going to annex. I tell you this, if we don't do something, okay? If we don't do something, we're gonna miss the vote. And I'm not telling you what I know, I'm not telling you what I think, I'm telling you what I know. Dealing with people that come in, day in and day out into this city, into this county, people are coming this way. All you have to do is just look east of us, and you see the growth. And just because you don't see it, and the particular grounds around here, do not fool yourself. Don't think that it isn't here. You just don't see the buildings being put up. So, once again, I ask that you look into your heart and do what you feel is best for you. But, when we talk about timing, I ask you this question. When is the good time? Thank you.
Ms. Cyrus?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'm coming on a soft note rather than complain. I'm coming to compliment. I would like to compliment the Councilman Herbert Thomas in his absence in relation to a beautiful job he did last Monday morning, acting as, representing the city in presenting awards to the guest speakers who were on the campus in relation to the 125th HBCU celebration. He did a beautiful job, and I was very proud of what he did and what the city did for the guest speakers. And I just, I really appreciated seeing what he did in relation to representing the city. And you sent a very good representative to do what he did, and it was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ms. Reed, and I'm a lifelong member of this community. I would like to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my opinion. I am here concerning the possible change of business in our city from general law to home rule. It's unsettling to me that the numbers used to justify moving to the home rule are real numbers, but they're what mathematicians call irrational, because they largely represent the university students who are only in the community at best four years. And of these 5,000-plus, so say citizens, less than 500 votes have been cast in recent elections. That means possibly two things. The 5,000 are not concerned with city business, because they don't consider themselves citizens. Or two, there's a special section of that 5,000 that has lost faith or trust in city elections. At any rate, this says to me, we are not ready to institute a home rule charter. The amount involved, the amount of involvement required by all citizens to create a charter that represents the will of the people has not happened. This entire charter was proposed and approved in one month. That's not a lot of timing. That's not a lot of consideration. That's not a lot of polling. In my opinion, that's an awful short time to create a charter that will be used, if passed, from this day forward as the operations manual for our city. This is a nightmare of the making with amendments, additions, and other changes to come. The committee did not do a good job in soliciting citizen input for this charter. They did only what was required so that you wouldn't be able to say that they didn't do anything. But incorporate America meets requirements is minimal effort. And ladies and gentlemen, this is exactly what this charter is going to give you, minimal consideration. Overall, as defined by the Texas Municipal League, home rule gives power to the city and not the citizens. Until the city can give what it's asking, give more than what's required, reestablish trust, I don't see how we can pass the home rule charter at this time. Good night, and thank you for your time.
Malcolm Jackson?
How you all doing this evening?
Good.
My name is Malcolm Jackson. I just wanted to come and express a couple of views that I had as a younger person, a younger citizen living in Prairie View. I initially came to Prairie View as a student, and I've just maintained living here the past several years. Through my observation, I really wanted to speak about the progress in the city and as well as the home rule charter. As far as progress goes, I've been here about 10 years, and Prairie View looks exactly the same as it has looked for the past 10 years. I believe we've been under the same administration about nearly 15 years, 13 years, and there's no new business here in Prairie View. We have the same three businesses we've always had, the Unco, the PB Grocery, and the New Grocery Store. However, none of them sell groceries, they all sell tobacco and beer. That's the only thing that sells in Prairie View. We have no other businesses except Subway and the New Winkaritas. The new businesses, the bowling alley that's supposedly, supposed to be in the city is on campus, which means that we don't get any property taxes from the business, which means your property tax, my property tax, as a property owner, is increased because we don't get property tax from the businesses that are in Prairie View. As far as the home rule charter, I'm still confused on how we even qualify for home rule charter when it says that we have 5,500 citizens that live in the city. However, it does not reflect that. Everything that the city has, nothing reflects 5,500 citizens living here. No other college town do you have to leave the town to purchase or do anything or get the necessities. You have to leave and drive 10 miles to go anywhere, leaving from campus, to buy anything and then return to campus. If you're hungry, you gotta leave and go 10 miles to Hempstead or to Waller. Cities with less people than we have, we have the largest employer in the county. And we still have, when you get off of work, you still have to leave the city to go buy something or do something. Whereas, we're trying to get home rule charter, but the numbers don't reflect that we have 5,500 people in the city. The last election, I believe, less than 500 people voted. And the county, in the prior election for county judge, only 176 people voted. And of those 5,000, if they want to count, I don't know if they're actually counting the students, but if they are counting the students, only 88 students out of the supposed 8,000, which is 1% of the students voted in the previous election, in the election for county judge, which was last year. So, I don't know if it's a mind thing or a mind trick that they're trying to portray upon us or try to make, dumb it down for us to not be able to see, but there's been no progress made in Prairie View since I've been here. And I don't see really any progress coming. There's nothing being built, there's nothing being done. I know they got the new business up here by Uncle that still hasn't opened, but I just don't see any change. And I would like to see new administration so we can bring in new change. That's it.
Thank you. I just wanted to come, I'm, first, I'm Dwayne Charleston. I publish a little newspaper called Prairie Magazine. And as much as I talk and have been around, this is the first time in my life I've ever spoke at Prairie City Council. I was like, wow. But listen, about a month ago, I decided, and some other guys, we were gonna do a candidate forum. I came to the paper, didn't do any paperwork, they wouldn't let me do paperwork. But they said, what day do you want to have it? I said, what day I want to have it? I said, you sure I don't need to sign anything? They said, no, this was somebody at the counter, no, you don't have to sign anything. So, I'm like, okay, well, cool, this is what day I want to do it. So, I'm playing this thing, I put it in my newspaper, spend the money, you know, run the free ass, and I want to do a candidate forum, just so that we can have dialogue about things like home rule and... Just dialogue. I like dialogue, I like free speech and free press. And that's what I like. That's what I like. And all I wanted to do was just do a forum here in City Hall, a forum in City Hall, that they said that I could do. They approved it, I published it, and then I got a phone call from city staff and said, Mayor Jackson said that I couldn't have it because he wasn't sure of the format. And I don't know if you said that or not, that's what they told me. And then I got a phone call from the, from the attorney, I presume that's, this is the lady here, and she told me that it was just not a good thing to do, because the city doesn't want to get involved in elections. And she said, there are many other places that you can have it. And she's, and I said, well, just put it in writing, tell me what the city ordinance or the state statute is that says that I can't do it. And she said, well, there is none. There is none, we just think this is not the place to do it, you are not to do it here, we just don't want to get involved in that. And I got to thinking, well, maybe the cities, I was gone for a couple of years, maybe the city doesn't collect, conduct their own elections anymore. I presumed that to be the case, that they have contracted out for somebody else to oversee their elections, because they told me that, the lady attorney here said that the city is best not to get involved in elections. It's crazy, y'all. It's crazy, y'all. Why we've got this nice building, this nice facility? I came here one time, the Democrats, and I don't, the Democrats were here, they had a meeting. That's a, I don't understand it. And I don't speak, y'all know, I didn't ever come up here and spoke. I don't understand it. Why we, why I could not sponsor a candidate forum for free speech. There's no ordinance against it, there's no state law against it. I did the proper, whatever was necessary according to the city, and was still denied the right to do it. So, I just want to come and let you guys know, then my paper comes out tomorrow. I'm not here to plug my paper, but I'll, I'll write a little bit more about it in the paper in terms of what I think is, now, I expect this kind of behavior from Waller County, from the Justice Department against me. I expect it from the City of Waller, Waller Independent School District, but I cannot understand why the City of Prairie View would not let somebody who was born here, literally raised here, merely do a free speech candidate forum. It does not make sense to me. May I have extra time, please?
May I have additional time?
May, may I have extra time?
I move that this person be given that additional time.
The move the purpose of giving additional time, I will figure out.
Man, y'all, we had to go through all of that for me to get some extra time? But, and I'm just hitting and running my mouth, but I ain't really got a whole lot to say, except to let the people know that I believe that I had the right, the newspaper had the right. Now, y'all seen my paper, normally I go real radical. And I felt this time, I said, you know what, I'm gonna do a paper? It's gonna be nice and positive. There ain't been one controversial article in that newspaper. I haven't picked sides for nobody on nothing. I've, and I'm gonna keep doing it, I'm gonna keep being positive. I'm gonna keep being positive. But it makes no sense whatsoever that you can't have a forum in a city hall, like this is something that's not political. Everything is political. Everything is political. And I totally expect that if we really want to get dialogue, if you really want to talk about what's best for Prairie View, you ought to be jumping at every single opportunity. The city ought to jump at every single opportunity to have free speech and dialogue in its own house, the house that taxpayers built. They ought to be jumping at the opportunity. I don't understand, and I hope that in some case, I wouldn't, oh, I forgot this. I wanted to be on the agenda so that we could kind of deal with some stuff and, but I wouldn't put on the agenda for some other things and everything. And this is crazy. And we talking about home rule? We can't even home govern. Crazy, just crazy. But anyway, I want to encourage the city's attorney, the city's mayor, the city council people to, to come up with a more definitive policy on who can use the facility and what for, who cannot use it. It ought to be very clear. The lady here, council here, told me, she said, well, there, there are so many other places that you can go to, and she said, just put a sign on the door and say that it's somewhere else. Remember you told, just put a sign on the door. I'm like, no, I can't, I'm not gonna put a sign on the door and tell me to go somewhere else? I just won't do it. I got run around for Waller Independent School District for years, and I get run around from my own people? Amazing. Absolutely amazing. Absolutely amazing. Free speech, self-government with justice, that's what Prairie View needs. And I don't know that we need to expand and all that, I didn't even read the stuff. Because at that point, I'm like, if I can't even have a forum in the city council, I ain't even worried about whether or not we can do eminent domain and, and spend the money to go, go to court with somebody and then break the citizen, because now we in court going about some other things, like we trying to do some eminent domain, we trying to pay a mayor salary, we trying to pay all this stuff. You gonna get spending so much money? Hey, my mother died last August, I probably run out of town. But I remember she used to always say, maybe we ought to just go back to a water district. Maybe we ought to just go back to a water district. And I'm like, hold up, she talking about going back then, now we talking about going forward? I don't know, I didn't read the stuff. But from the way that I was treated, I suspect that we not even in a position to be talking about going to court over other issues that invariably come with situations like home rule that y'all don't know about yet. Y'all don't know about it yet, but when it happens, y'all gonna be like, oh, my God, that's something they didn't tell us, and it's gonna cost us big time. So, once we get some business in, we create some tax revenues, and we got some money coming in, and we got jobs and employment and everything, once we get all of that, we have some money coming into the coffers, maybe we can afford to pay our lawyers and other lawyers the hundreds of thousands, you know, like, like Waller Independent School District. When they would fight me, they spent like $300,000. They love, lawyers love making money. They love making money. And so, if we're gonna go to home rule, make sure we have some money in the coffers to pay the law bill. And that's gonna be several hundred thousand dollars that y'all gonna be paying for. Free speech. Free speech, free press. That's what I'm talking about. And I'm gonna keep it positive. I'm gonna keep it positive. Appreciate it.
The Texas Election Code prohibits a city from contributing its resources to a measure. It cannot indicate whether or not it is for or against a measure. The charter is a measure. City Hall is a city resource. Now, I don't know, sir, what you were going to say. I can't control what you were going to say. However, to be on the safe side, it was best that you move your forum someplace else so that it would not give the impression that we were violating that state law, which is considered broadly. One cannot use city resources to favor or disfavor a city measure. Now, if the charter had not been on the ballot, my decision, my conversation to you would have been entirely different. But there was a measure on the ballot, and I did not want to give the impression that the city was taking a position. Now, the information that I gave, I was trying to protect those people sitting up there. I was trying to protect this city, and you may not believe me, but I was also trying to protect you so that there be no possibility of someone coming around accusing misuse of city funds to take a position for or against a measure. Now, you can have your forum someplace else, you say whatever you want to say. Do whatever you want to do. That's better for you, because you're not constricted. As I said before, I'm trying to protect this city and even you. And there was nothing against you, it was my advice as a lawyer. Thank you.
Item number five, application of council chair. I have some questions before we ratify the council chair. For several months now, I've been asking for clarification of the 750 a month for the monthly budgeted funds to the fire department. I put in, I put in public information request, I've been told they were destroyed in a flood on the city hall side. So, I requested information from the fire department side. I still getting nothing. But while doing some rearranging of dust in my office at home, I ran across some paperwork that I had when I wrote a grant for the fire department when I was on the board of directors. In that paperwork, and that was to obtain a taker, a taker pumper, I believe that it was, and we got it, we did get it, by the way. But in that paperwork, there was information from Walter Davis that indicated our monthly payment is $400. It shows 750 on our monthly budgeted fund. I need clarity on that simply because we are stewards of public money. We need verification of that. And that was a forestry grant that I wrote, we did get the grant, and the city actually ended up paying about approximately $10,000. The city paid approximately $10,000, even though we can't afford a fire department. And when Mayor Leverett was mayor, he made a $10,000 donation, so we're talking $20,000 right here off the table. Okay, additionally, the attorney's fees are $17,204 for this month. I would like clarity on that, because according to our budget, and if I read the budget correctly, we are about $19,000 over budget in attorney fees. I requested, I did a public information request for fire department documentation. I got an answer from the city attorney. The E S D makes checks directly to the fire department, and it does not come by the city. So, I need clarification, the taxpayers need clarification on why the city attorney is answering public information requests that I made to the fire department, because we don't even have that information here at City Hall. So, I need clarification on that before I can vote to approve this charter.
Well, just to clarify, Ms. Hunter, this is one statement I want to make sure that you see that the monthly payment, this is from USDA, is $742, this for a 12-month period. We did provide the attorney with the information back from the beginning, along with the contract. So, that's, that's not true about the $400, that's simply not true.
I have it right here.
Here's a statement from USDA, it's not from, from any other...
Walter Davis was the accountant.
This is a statement, a tax statement from USDA, it says 742 a month.
42 yearly orders is 400 a month.
That's not true.
It's right here, $1,904.
Here's a statement from USDA.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we ratify the accounts paid with April 28, 2015.
Move the purpose of ratifying the account paid from April 28, 2015. Is the motion second?
I have a question.
We didn't get the answer on the legal fees part, because in the past three months, I, I went back and I looked, and we went from $780 last month, I think it was $6,900 in February, and $6,800 in January. Is there a reason why the spikes went up?
Because the invoices, the city attorney provides us with invoices to show the time that they spent working up the charter, which the council authorized us to do for a city charter. That's where the spike went up. That's where it's from.
Could we, could we get a copy of that?
Yes, you could have, you could have invoices before the meeting, you get this before the meeting. You should have. There's no C. That's where the spike is.
Could you also explain the other expenses?
All, all the fees are from open record requests and other...
Yeah, I don't have them.
We can give all the invoice.
Want to look at the invoice, that explains. How much time is spent on each particular...
We got several lawsuits. First question, they called for all the papers, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Go opposed?
Oppose.
I have seven. Item number six, approval of the minutes from March 24, 2015. What's your question?
I just like verification on the statement that Mr. Johnson made, J.J. Johnson. And I just want to make sure this was clear, because I wasn't here, I was at another meeting. He said, mayor and council, there were funds for the police department to purchase vehicles, and looking at cost of vehicles, we may even pay cash. Is that correct? Was that statement correct, it's on the minutes? The mayor and council, there are funds for police department to purchase vehicles. Do we have that in the budget or somewhere? And you're looking at costs?
Yes, the financing.
So, that is a correct statement?
Yes, it's in the budget, yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I move that we approve the minutes from March 24.
Move the purpose of approving the minutes from March 24, 2015. Is the motion the second, or are you ready for the question?
Question.
All the papers, anybody saying aye?
I was saying I wasn't here.
Item number seven, presentation by Ms. Veronica Sharp, an award to Ms. Alma for yard of the quarter, Sharp.
And there's a correction to the item, it should be Mr. Saal.
Mr. Saal.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor Jackson, city council members, peeping residents, and also the visitors that are here. Okay, we're here today to recognize the winner for the Yard of the Quarter Award. The goal of the Yard of the Quarter is to award and recognize the efforts of peeping residents who take pride in their home and landscape and inspire others to do the same.
Can, can you have him keep the lights down, please?
All right, the Yard of the Quarter candidates are judged solely on the total exterior appearance of their property and front yard as viewed from the street. General upkeep of the yard and property are very important. Factors include the overall appearance, tidiness, and neatness of the front of the property. Each yard is chosen from the nominations given to the judging team. Nominations are made by emailing to cityofpb quarterly@gmail.com or dropping the nomination form off by City Hall. Note, residents may nominate their own property. Nominations are due by the third Saturday in March. They have an opportunity in June, September, and December. Each yard may only win the Yard of the Quarter Award once in a calendar year. There were seven nominations for the Yard of the Quarter submitted for judging during the quarter of April, May, and June 2015. The resident with the highest score was Mr. Don Saal, who lives on Alonso Street in Concord Village subdivision. So, let's give him a hand, please. And for Mr. Saal winning the award for this quarter, we have a certificate, so if Mayor Jackson can come down. He will also, um, take this yard of the quarter sign with him, and will have that placed in his, uh, yard. If you can read that, please.
All right, I sure will. Yard of the quarter, April, May, and June twenty fifteen, a certificate of recognition awarded to Mr. Don Saal with appreciation for your efforts in maintaining and ensuring pride in your property. As we all work to keep the city of Prairie view clean and beautiful, this is awarded this twentieth day of April, twenty fifteen, Freddie Jackson, congratulations, Mr. Saal. Thank you, sir.
So we do want to thank Mr. Saal, thank you so much, and to all holder of this man. So to all the other residents, uh, the deadline for submitting the nominations for the July, August, and September quarter is by June the twentieth, twenty fifteen, and again, you can nominate your, your own yard. Uh, so this is just, you know, for us to show pride in our community, uh, I do see a lot of, uh, work being done in a lot of the yards, I mean, I've been riding and booking and I see cleaning going on, so if we can just continue to keep that up and encourage those around us to do the same, because, you know, this is our city, and I say it, the last thing I have here. Again, thanks to all of our P V residents who work hard to take care of one of your most valuable assets, and that is your property. And even if you rent, uh, you lease or whatever, I mean, still continue to take pride in where you live. I know where I live, you know, the students around me, where's, uh, Jonathan, he's not here, but, you know, we constantly, um, pick up paper, roll those trash cans in, so you can see a difference if you ride down Echo Street on Henderson, Hargis, as well as Charleston Street, and even on the end towards the utility plant. So, uh, let us all continue to work together to make our city, city beautiful, clean, as well as safe, and thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Sharp. You know, uh, one of the personal privileges, Ms. Sharp, we really want to thank you for your efforts, those are all volunteer efforts, and rather than just complaining, you come up and do something about it in a positive way, I thank you for your work. Item number eight, council member Thomas, Mayor Protena, recognition of a president bowling team, but before we get started, uh, Ms. Cyrus, are you still here? Ms. Cyrus, you had a comment that you wanted, uh, Mr. Thomas was still coming in here to do something, you paid him a compliment during the citizen's comment, and I wanted to make him aware that there was one of the items on that, she commended you for a job you have done during eighteen ninety, one hundred twenty-three, anniversary, so we got compliments. Do you have a job to give?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, pleasant and wonderful evening, friends and neighbors, my name is Herb Thomas, and first of all, thank you very much, Mr. Cyrus. I, uh, enjoy representing the city, and I try to put my best foot forward at all times. Talk about putting your best foot forward at all times, ladies and gentlemen, it has been long overdue, but we brought them back. We have a group of students that are doing good things at our university, right here in beautiful downtown Prairie view. And wherever we have an opportunity, we can put the spotlight on these students and let them know all the good things that our students are doing, we ought to do just that. If you look in the news, you saw a group of students got in trouble yesterday, they voted on their city, but ladies and gentlemen, our students is not voting on our city, our students is raising up the name of our city. And with that being said, let me bring out the first team I'd like to present. We had the ladies bowling team, that went to the SWAC tournament. They, they went to the SWAC tournament, and they took out all the best they had to offer in the SWAC, and you all guessed it, our ladies bowling team came out on top, so coming forward. Ladies and gentlemen, these young ladies represented not only the university, but the whole community with honor and with vigor. And tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of council, please come down and join me, I'll represent to them a small token of our appreciation. We're gonna go ahead and give them all medals, because they are champions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, folks.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And while we're presenting the medals, we don't want to stop there, the city wants to give them a certificate of commendation, and I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Hunnitt, if she can read these certificates and read the names for me, please.
She asked if I could read.
Council lady Hunnitt has been a very distinguished educator for so many years, and we know she can read, so.
It's an honor for me to share this with you, uh, the city of Prairie view is presenting this certificate of commendation presented to Destiny Valas.
I'm right here.
Where's Destiny?
Right here.
Destiny, in recognition of a job well done, you have made Prairie view proud on winning the twenty fifteen women's bowling SWAC championship. Your dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work are inspiring. The mayor, city council, and citizens of Prairie view wish you many years of great achievement.
And this is coming to leave the team, all the other members, but all the certificates for this team says the same thing.
Renee Sepul. Congratulations. Elizabeth Rodriguez. Lenise Rodriguez.
Lindsay.
Lindsay? Okay, we gotta listen to that. Brittany Kitty. Brittany Weimer? Weimer? Brittany Weimeyer, Alexis Borman. Sarita Turner.
Right here.
Ashley Reed. And Coach Glenn White. Do you have another one over there? Well, a quick question, Shelby, we'll get you one.
As a special recognition, one thing that the city has made a tradition of doing, whenever, uh, our students go out and really shine and bring a lot of honor to our city and the community, uh, the university and the community, because we're, we're composite. Uh, it, it, we have to show you how much we appreciate, so you have something lasting to put up in your new bowling alley. That's gonna be there, uh, and, and maybe you and Shelby can come forward as a team captain, so. This is a key to our city, and it's a special key, it's a key to the city of Prairie view that's, uh, being, uh, given or presented to Prairie view and university women's bowling twenty fifteen SWAC champions, so congratulations, Coach. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'd just like to say, we thank you for this recognition, it's, it's so very much appreciated, uh, we love representing Prairie view A and M. Uh, just to let you know, this is our third SWAC championship in the last four years. We're trying to make it a habit, so, uh, we thank you again for the recognition, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Shelby will, will take care of you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Somebody, they, they have a, the bowling team has a turn, turn the light off.
As the bowling team leave, we'll be calling upon the men cross-country team. Back in, in the fall, simply we'd like to present to you our medal of distinction. And while we're giving you a medal of distinction, we're gonna call upon our educator once again to come forward and present to you the certificate of commendation.
I'm going to share, I'm going to share with you.
Coach Williams.
That's for Coach Clay.
Well.
Oh, there's Coach Clay.
On behalf of the citizens of Prairie view, once again, y'all make us proud, because when you went for Prairie view, you went for the city and for the university as well. We all recognize because of the name Prairie view, so thank y'all for your, for your job well done, for your excellence in coaching, and their excellence on the athletic field, so we appreciate it. So this is a token of our appreciation that y'all can place up in the track headquarters, along with your other trophies. Uh, it's the city of Prairie view presents the key to the city, April twenty eighth, twenty fifteen, to the Prairie view and university men's cross-country twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen SWAC champions. Thank you, good job.
Several members of this team was able to qualify for NCAA, uh, competition, and they have done a fine job, and we're gonna put Coach Williams on the spot, and he can make a small comment on behalf of the team.
As, as he was saying, this time, this past season, uh, half these guys up here, matter of fact, everyone with the exception of Danny, had qualified for regionals, first time a whole team has qualified for representatives Prairie view at the regional ranking for the NCAA. They went and competed, uh, unfortunately, it didn't turn out the way we wanted, but, uh, thank God, we made it through the first time ever, and we're looking forward to doing it again. Also, keep in mind, that these are the same guys that are representing the men and indoor and outdoor team as well. So they all shall be returning with the exception of Mr. Baptiste, and you should have great plans for the future. I want to add that Mr. Baptiste and Mr. Lucky will be competing in next month for the regionals for outdoor competition. Uh, Mr. Baptiste will be competing in eight hundred meters, he has a time of, uh, one fifty fourteen, which put him like at number thirty on the forty-eight list, and Mr. Lucky is sitting at, uh, number twenty-four. Twenty, I'm sorry. In the four hundred hurdles, so we, we're very proud of them, and there's a couple other gentlemen that are competing next one.
Thank you very much for a job well done.
Thank y'all for having us.
Pays close to over a hundred thousand dollars for Prairie view and university. Ladies and gentlemen, these people are just, just not smart, but they know how to make money. So who's their coach? They. They are coached by the legendary, listen to me. Their coach has won twice in the Black College Quiz Bowl, their coach has won twice in the Hunter Campus Quiz Bowl. So their coach has been upgraded, not as a coach, but a legendary coach. Their coach is coached by none other than Herb Thomas. This is great, but none of this would have been possible if it wasn't for a young man with a, a vision of putting Prairie view students to compete not only against A B C U's, but against other universities of the first class. And that young man was Mr. Frederick Roberts, when he was director student. One and none of Mr. Roberts for what he have done, and as a small token of our appreciation, we want to make sure that y'all also receive medals for being national champions, so I'm gonna pass over. Our educator. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna best of these students next. The, the first certificate is gonna go to Mr. Shaheed.
Mr. Shaheed, congratulations.
Shaheed was our institutional ambassador for our program this year, uh, he was able to travel with the national team, and he is a freshman student of biology, and so Prairie view have three more years of being national champion because of.
Jasmine Westmoreland.
Miss Jasmine Westmoreland was my special assistant for the program, she's a senior English major, and she's going to go on to, uh, graduate studies and maybe join the P school, and she was one of those who was working behind the scenes, making sure everything happened for the national champion.
And the twin, Miss Jessica Westmoreland.
Jessica Westmoreland represented Prairie view at the Black College Quiz Bowl, she was so good that they had her compete in the champion with champions, and ladies and gentlemen, she put on a show, if you have Bunks TV or other televisions that have those black shows on there, you will see her profiled there, holding up the name of Prairie view and university.
Miss Mia Shine.
Miss Mia Shine, uh, was part of our twenty thirteen national team that went to, uh, California, and she was so interested, that she said, I want to give somebody else the opportunity, and she continued to serve as one resource person for the team.
Mr. Eric Johnson, congratulations.
He's a sophomore out of the, uh, chemical engineering program, uh, we found him last year when we had our freshman program, and he was so, so well that we said we want to keep you close to our program, I was able to take him to California, and he was part of the national team as well.
Uh, Mr. Chase, congratulations.
Chase is a freshman student, uh, engineering freshman students, the unique thing about Chase is that Chase was in Egypt, Africa, two days before the tournament, and he said, Mr. Thomas, I'm gonna be there. Mr. Chase traveled all the way from Africa just to be here to make sure Prairie view won the national championship, and he's profiled in, in LA Times, uh, in Times Square, wherever Hunter is, uh, being profiled, that's the face of Hunter Campus right there.
Mr. Brandon Billings.
Right here.
Right here, congratulations.
Mr. Mr. Brandon Billings is our second, uh, individual who represented Prairie view in the Black College Quiz, but Mr. Billings for the second year has competed at Hunter Campus also challenge, and he was one of the top scorers in the nation. This, uh, last year, he was ranked number eight, this year, he was ranked number four.
Mr. Joseph Dowell, congratulations, Mr. Dowell.
Mr. Dowell was, was our team captain of the team, and he's the guy that after us all the way to victory. Uh, he been on the team for the last, uh, four years now, and he said that he wanted to go out on top, and he surely went out on top, so I take my hat to him.
And last but not least, Coach Herbert Thomas.
Y'all don't believe I can jump, but ladies and gentlemen, during the tournament, I jumped as well. I was overcome with joy for these young people and what they have done, they have represented Prairie. They have represented Prairie View with class and with dignity, and so I am so, so excited to be part of this team. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to be, to, to have a ride with you all. And I informed them, and I'm gonna make it public, I informed them that I want to got as a champion. And so I am gonna be hanging up my coaching skills and dedicating myself to some other stuff. And, uh, we're gonna turn the team over to Mr. Joseph Dowell, who's gonna be a graduate student, he been training for the last four years, and we're in good hands, so.
Mr. Thomas, uh, thank you for a job well done, and for your hard work and dedication in holding up the, the name of Prairie View. The City of Prairie View presents the key to the city, to the twenty fifteen Honda Campus All-Star Challenge, national champions. Uh, this twentieth day of April, twenty fifteen.
Thank y'all very much. I put on my gold jacket, I haven't got this gold jacket since twenty ten, when we won our last championship, so I want to share with the team as well, so. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank y'all very much, the national champion, I take my hat to you, congratulations.
Thank y'all. For twenty, twenty fifteen, it's April, uh, twenty, twenty fifteen, Motorcycle Safety and Riding. Get Mr. Randall, ask Mr. Randall to read the proclamation. For, well, members of the motorcycle club, can y'all come, come follow him?
The proclamation reads, whereas the month of May marks the traditional start of riding season, motorcycles become more prevalent on our streets, they need to be aware of their presence. The need to be aware of their presence is the utmost urgency, and whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month is designed to increase public awareness about motorcycles, encourage their safe and proper use among motorcycle riders, is worth special recognition, and whereas motorcycles occupy a very important position in the history of our state and nation, and whereas the motorcycle is an efficient vehicle which reduces fuel consumption, has little impact on our overworked roads and highway system, is an important mode of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation. And whereas over two-thirds of motor, motor, car motorcycle crashes, and nearly one-half of all motorcycle crashes are caused by drivers, not by motorcycles. And whereas several organizations are committed to increasing the safe operation of motorcycles by promoting rider safety, educate, education programs by providing safety instruction at local chapter meetings, and whereas citizens should recognize the fact that motorcycle operators have the same rights and privileges as operators of other vehicles on roads and highways, and whereas it is in the best interest of our community and the citizens to note the increase in the amount of motorcycle traffic as we enter the warm weather months, to, to enable the reduction of accidents and injuries involving motorcycles. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the city council and citizens of Prairie View, Texas, do hereby recognize May twenty fifteen as Motorcycle Awareness Month.
Now you could call anybody. Okay, now you guys can come in a little bit. Let me put it this way, women come in, because y'all numbering the men.
Item number twelve, discussing take action on board a contract for relocation of Force Main to High Point Lift Station to the lowest bidder, which is H.W. Garrett, in the amount of two hundred two thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. Council, if you remember, uh, we asked the engineer to go out for bids to relocate the line from Richards Road Lift Station, uh, down Richards Road to the, uh, Richards Road Lift Station on the north of, uh, US two ninety. Uh, that was to relieve the showers, uh, sewers that were behind that house, and this, uh, solicited the bids, and uh, H.W. Garrett came in to have the lowest and best bid, and we're asking approval of this contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hunter.
I'm glad we approved the contract for, uh, H.W. Garrett, in the amount of two hundred two thousand, eight hundred forty dollars, uh, for the relocation of Force Main at the High Point Lift Station.
We're moving property segment to approve the walk contract for relocation of Force Main at the High Point Lift Station to H.W. Garrett, who's lowest bidder, two hundred two thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. You ready to motion a second, or you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ask hey. Item number thirteen, uh, discussing take action on Resolution oh four, two eight, two zero, one five eight, for execution of an agreement with Government Capital Corporation to finance the acquisition of police vehicles. This was a budget item, uh, purchasing police vehicles, uh, Mr. Johnson, man, I've been soliciting around to find the best. Office him and, uh, Chief Johnson paid visits to, uh, the vehicles, they lifted the vehicles, they picked out the ones. Uh, they also, Mr. Johnson worked with, uh, Capital Corporation to finance the vehicle, Mr. Johnson, you want to add something to that?
Yeah, wood, uh.
This is a budget item.
I'm just gonna read from the, uh, letter that, uh, was sent to council members, from, from the map of the budget. And this letter, in, in reference to the police department, this budget proposes to fund a police chief, a sergeant, detective, five patrol officers, and administrative assistants. This is an increase of one patrol officer over last year's budget. Also included is funding for additional patrol vehicles, computer and software upgrade. The patrol vehicles will be funded by a four-year loan, that is in the cover letter, the detail is in the budget. Now I'm gonna turn to the, uh, part that references Public Works. A change in Public Works operations.
So that's, that's, that's the next resolution.
Oh, 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 excuse me, okay. I'll, I'll save that for the next resolution, but again, uh, these items are included in the budget. There are line items in debt service for the financing of the vehicle. In, what we were able to do with Capital Corporation, and we had to really work with them on this here, is that we were able to get the financing at three point eight percent for both, uh, for both, uh, items here, both the vehicles and the, uh, and the tractor. Also, we were able to, uh, that's the finance, the three point eight four percent. Also, we were able to get the payments done on an annual basis. And the first payment is not due until February fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. That is not in this current period. So what we were able to do in, in this financing, uh, strategy was your first, first payment won't be due in this budget cycle, but in the next future budget cycle, two thousand and sixteen. And, and, and so in essence, it's approved in this cycle, which is great, but you, you, you're gonna have a favorable position from the standpoint of the payment itself, because it, the first payment is not due until February of two thousand and sixteen. And the other reason what's good, good about this strategy is this right here. When is your revenue at its highest level? In the month of February, you know why? Because that's when we collect our property taxes. So this assures us that, well, from a cash flow standpoint, we will have no problem in making that payment when it becomes due. So this is a win-win situation. From a cash flow standpoint, you're not distributing your cash on a monthly basis, so you retain your cash. That's additional leverage. Plus, we got this loan at three point eight percent, and that's a great percentage, uh, with the amount of debt that the city has. The more debt you have, the more, your credit score goes up. Uh, but in our case, they looked at our history, and they looked at our, our property tax ratios, and they were favorable to, for us to be able to get this particular percentage, uh, for this particular loan here. And wait, one other thing too, is that when they disperse the money, they will disperse the total amount of the loan to our bank account. So what that means is this, is that we get to, uh, spend the money as we make decisions for the equipment that we obtain. In other words, sometimes the banks, or any institution won't give you your money until you send them, uh, the equipment. In our case, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna draft, once this is approved, they will draft a wire to our bank account for the total amount of the loan that we're requesting, in each case. The total amount for the cars is eighty thousand dollars. Well, we, we're still negotiating for that. We, we, we know we're gonna get two.
Two what, patrol cars?
Patrol cars.
SUVs?
We already have one, uh, excuse me, we already have one Tahoe, already, we put the down payment on it. Uh, Chief, you want to tell about that Tahoe?
How many cars?
Okay, we gotta get, we gonna get at least two, we might get three, in, in negotiation based on the prices of.
First of all, why is it that you don't have any information on these cars?
Well, we, I have, we have the information on, on the one car, the main thing was to get the financing.
Well, how you gonna find that information, you don't even know the finances, no idea of what the cars are?
Wait, but we're gonna, Chief, you, you wanna? Well, that will be brought to, that will be brought to the council, that, that will be brought to the council. Because we, right now, we, we know we have two. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, I got the details of the car.
How much shop did you do for that interest rate? Where, where does our bank go?
So what's the prosperity?
No.
Can you explain that we are, the process that you went through? General, the government corp, uh, Capital Corporation is a financing company, is not a car dealership. So we're, we're getting pre-qualified, is what he's saying, and then we'll go back. Now, I don't have any particulars, the councilwoman is asking for the particulars on what you have, and how many cars, but we're not, we didn't go to a car dealership, we're getting financing first, which is the, the number he's given us, which is the eighty thousand, and then we'll go back to the dealership now and say, we have eighty thousand, we want at least two cars, but if we can get three, that, that doesn't hurt us, does it?
But he said, he just said that they've already put the down payment on it.
What happened, when did you get the Tahoe?
That, that shit right there.
But when did we get it?
We, we haven't gotten it yet.
He said you put a down payment on it.
We have a down payment on it, but that's just to hold it.
Did you shop the interest rate?
Yes, ma'am, we shop.
Our rate?
Prosperity, they was fine.
They was fine?
Yes, ma'am, they was fine. Capital Corporation.
Details on it? That's what she asked.
Okay, I, I just handed her a note.
So this is the two thousand and twelve?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a used vehicle?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, where, you have a vehicle maintenance record on this?
Chief went and looked at the car, and approved it.
Okay, but do you have a vehi- vehicle maintenance check?
Yes, ma'am, we, we, we gonna get it, I don't have a book. But the, the main thing tonight was to get the finance.
I understand that, but I want, I want some, you want information on the vehicle, this is two thousand and twelve.
I understand what we're just trying to do tonight. Okay.
I want the information, that's what I'm asking you. Do you have, Chief Johnson?
I'm sorry.
Information on the vehicle, that's all I'm asking.
The, the vehicle that I looked at was that, that vehicle, it's a two thousand and twelve Tahoe, I think it has about thirty-seven thousand miles on it.
It's, it's on there.
Okay, it, it, uh, as my understanding, that it belonged to a, a law enforcement officer in, in Harris County that traded it on a, a, a different vehicle. It's, uh, it's, it's in good condition, I mean, it's, it's obviously used, but it is in very good condition as far as I can, from my inspection, I'm not a mechanic or anything, but it was clean, it was well taken care of, so that.
He kept maintenance records on it as well?
I, I have not seen the man, the maintenance records, I have not. Yes, yes, and tha- and that's one of the things that I, you know, that we've talked about, is to making sure that if we purchase a used vehicle, that we know what, what we're getting. Uh, what, what, what we've done, from my position and, 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 uh, dealing with Mr. Mr. Johnson, reference this, trying to take into account, uh, the budgetary issues, the, you know, and the, you know, we, we prefer to buy new vehicles, but they are very expensive. And so we're trying to still get what we need and, and take into account the, the cost, and so. We, we have looked, uh, the young lady that works at, that does grants, we've looked everywhere we could think of, we could not find a grant. Some of the grants that we might have been eligible for, as I mentioned, I mentioned to you on several occasions, because we, we had not been participating in the UCR program, we were not eligible for some of those grants. And so we, we were not able to find anything else, I mean, we've looked and looked, and she looked for us, and I've had some people that I know look, uh, we just didn't find anything. A lot of that money has been diverted to other things.
Did you talk to Walmart, they got theirs, they, they have a new fleet, brand new, not used, and they got them through, uh, grants, did you talk to them, did you see what you got?
Because they were eligible, uh, because of their UCR, yes, ma'am. I, I talked to Chief Harley, and, and him says also they purchased some vehicles that same way, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. For that particular one?
Which one?
That's that one.
There's the invoice right here, thirty-eight thousand.
And I, and I can tell you, I did, I did research on when we switched to, uh, Tahoe, that in competition I did, that was part of my project, they are expensive, I mean, when, when you, because you, most of the equipment that you have in other vehicles are not gonna fit the cage and those type of things. Uh, so an outfit of vehicle could run an excess of sixty, seventy thousand dollars with all the equipment in it.
Well, will this vehicle be in patrol?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
So you already have the equipment that you need in this vehicle?
No, this vehicle does not have anything in it. It, it is, it is pre-wired for, because he did have the light package on it, and we checked on, that's a probably about sixty-eight thousand dollars from, from what we talked with communication, I checked with the, uh, one of the companies that does outfitting police vehicles, and they said to outfit it with, to wire it, it, it's about sixty-eight thousand dollars, so that's a savings in and of itself, because it's already wired. The gentleman that had the vehicle, uh, had the lights removed, but he had to remove professionally, so it, it's very clean, so they, they did a good job with that one.
Yeah, that, that is a police Tahoe. There, and here's, here's another one.
Are they eligible for the grants?
Ho- hopefully, hopefully next year. Uh, we have to participate for three years in order to put us in a position to be eligible for, like the cops granting those.
So you looked at two that were good, you saying the third?
Yeah, we, we, we got two others at a shop being inspected, because they were fully equipped. And we wanted to make sure that the wiring was in good condition for the, for radar, and for, uh, Chief, it was radar and.
And a camera system.
And a camera system, and, and those two are being inspected now.
Are these used by vehicles?
Yeah, those two are used. Keep in mind, we've only gone this route because Chief recommended to me that he wanted Tahos. Crown Vixx are no longer manufactured, that was a, that's what we, that was a preferred vehicle. And so to satisfy the chief, given the money that we're restricted with. It was, it, we're restricted from trying to get a Tahoe brand new. As he said, the cost is a little bit more than what our budget will allow us to get this for, the number of vehicles we're trying to get. As he said, the cost is a little bit more than what our budget will allow us to get as far as the number of vehicles we're trying to get. And so, there are other options. We also have communicated with Ford Motor Company, what they make is a Taurus, a brand new. But again, that's, we're still, we're still exercising and, and researching those opportunities. What we're after tonight is that we just, we, we did obtain the funding for whatever way we go. And, and that's still open to us, but we need the funding. Because we were in an awkward position when we went to, to this particular dealer, with this particular vehicle. They said, when are we gonna, when are we gonna, when are y'all gonna pick it up? They wanted us to pick it up, and they, Chief went over and visited with them, but we had no money.
So what colors are?
I, I'm sorry, ma'am.
That was.
This particular one was, and, and I, when I went and talked with the, the lady there, she did tell us that there, that day, there had been three other people that were wanting that vehicle. Uh, we, 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 uh, we found out as we began to research this, that as Houston and other Dallas and Austin, other larger departments. Beginning their vehicle purchase cycle, there were none available. Uh, that, they were, the few that we found, we got online, we started looking, and you might call, you know, in the morning, if you call back fifteen minutes later, it would, it would be gone. I mean, so they, they were buying up everything that, that's out there. So we were lucky to, to find this particular vehicle. Uh, you know, we, we relented a little bit on what we wanted to, to begin with as far as the vehicles, understanding some of the pressures on the budget, and also recognizing what we have coming, uh, ahead of us. And that is that we're gonna have to purchase those radios, and I know that it's gonna be somewhat expensive, and we, we're not gonna have a choice in that. And so, uh, you know, we've kind of revised our, our wish list a little bit and, uh, you know, but I, I've been kind of pressing them to, to get this done.
What's your fleet look like now?
Well, we have the one down, the, uh, the, uh, Charger with the blown engine. Uh, the other vehicles are, we're, we're making it. Uh, we're having to spend money on repairs and, and those types of things, and I, you know, they, they're all in excess of, up in the range of one hundred and forty, hundred and fifty, sixty miles. So they, they have a lot of miles on them. And my concern about that is that most, most, uh, police fleets are turned over at seventy, eighty thousand miles at the most. Because you start having pressures on suspension, those types of things. Uh, those vehicles are, as, as we're using them on a normal day-to-day basis and driving around town, that, that's not so much of an issue. But in a vehicle that might end up in a high-speed situation, uh, everything has to work. And where that liability, in my opinion, rises, when we're in vehicles that, that, you know, there are just some things that wear, they just do over time. And so those types of things we get to be ahead of. So you'll see most, most cities that have, uh, maintenance and have vehicle replacement programs, they replace those vehicles at about seventy thousand miles, eighty thousand miles, something like that. So be, for that very reason, because they begin to become unreliable, you spend more money fixing them than you do driving them. Uh, the, uh, the one that I think that you have in, in your hand there, I think we could do that, and it, it, when we decided that's what we're gonna do. Uh, Mr. Johnson's telling me he's still looking for other vehicles, so, uh, but that vehicle, again, from my inspection, it, it appears to be in good shape. So we can have that done anytime, and we can have a mechanic.
On, on that vehicle. But again, we're, understand the procedure, that's all I'm asking, how is this time? Is understand the procedure.
So where, where is this financing company located?
Capital Financing?
This GCC?
They're out of Dallas. I'm not sure, we communicate outside.
So you look, I mean, how did you find it?
They were recommended by, uh, well, the private city management corps recommended that I look, look into them, and that's when I looked into it. I also checked with your friends. That were, that were receptive to pretty. Again, everybody's not receptive to us, but that's the financing. For them to give us this type of financing is a great deal. The financing rate is great, plus they gave us the payment plan. With no down payment. And they're gonna just wire us the funds for us to put in our depository, whereas that then we go to phase two, which is doing exactly what you all are referencing now. About the different types of vehicles. Then we, we can negotiate a lot better, because then when our group presents itself, we have the money to move on that. As like Chief mentioned, this vehicle was ready, and other people were trying to take advantage of it, but we were only putting some money down on it. Uh, because he felt there was a great buy and a great deal for, for the needs that he had, from, from the Tahoe standpoint. And it's a police Tahoe, those are not hard, those are very hard to find, with low miles.
So how much time do we have once we start paying them, so?
Part of it's paying off. Oh, it's in your package, this is a five year, it's a five year, it did give a five. It's in your package on, well, if you go to page seven, I think it is. Well, do y'all have the, they didn't give down the entire?
That's what I'm asking.
All we have was a resolution.
Oh, okay. Mr. Tucker didn't give you those?
We get your copy.
Yeah, we will. Mr. Tucker, can you get your house?
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson, for Chief? I don't know. thirteen?
If we approve this, uh, GCC tonight. My question was gonna be, when would we have received the vehicles and they be in the process of being introduced to us? What is the timeline?
The one vehicle that we have put money down, we will pick it up Friday. And Chief will have it Friday.
What about the other?
We haven't, we haven't. We're still in the process of researching the other vehicles. But every day, we're online, we search all over the United States for vehicles. We did have, uh, uh, the, uh, Ford, we had a, uh, a Ford Interceptor, which was a good buy, but it was used. But it was seven thousand, it was only seven thousand dollars. It was in Kansas, it's gone. It only had thirty thousand miles on it. But again, we couldn't, they want their money the next day, we had, we couldn't move on.
And so financing is three point eight percent?
Yes, sir.
First payment is not due till February twenty sixteen?
That's right.
Um, and it's gonna be the payment on the eighty thousand dollars for the vehicles?
Yes.
And inclusive of the tractor?
The tractor will be separate, it also will be due, same, same time.
Is it gonna be a black and white, because I noticed the car's in accounting is more black and white?
Okay, the, the one that we do have is, is solid black. This one is solid black.
So, so it's, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal to, to do that, that's the intent, is to, is to go with a standard color, yes, ma'am.
Is the government funding for having black and white?
Not, not, not that I'm aware of. Uh, what, what, what we're doing is trying to, trying to, you know, taking consideration of whatever we get that we will have for a considerable amount of time. And so that's why we've been kind of pressing to make sure that, you know, that, that we get a, a, as newer vehicles as we can afford to get. And because we, we will have them for a while, but as far as the funding goes, I'm not aware, and if you know about something, please let me know, but we have searched everywhere that I know of looks for funding, possible funding.
I was asking, I was told that the reason why, like, Harris County and why most forces are going to black and white, except there's some, some.
No.
Yeah, I heard that too.
No. No. That, that, you, you can write your bill and tell you want, I mean, nobody's gonna pay for a custom, ain't the first color. I, that's not that, that I've heard of, and I, and I've talked to some of the people with, that, they, there were several vehicles that, that come, and I'll tell you about that a little bit later, I'm gonna, gonna do, but I, I didn't, nobody spoke anything about that.
But what we're able to do also is that we are, we are still able to research any other type of grants that might become available. If we find grants, that's even gonna make it more advantageous to us to do other things in the police department.
Is there a prepayment on this?
No, it's no prepayment at all, nothing at all, nothing is due until February fifteen.
Now, the contract in the package that we're getting.
Yes, ma'am, yes, the contract is in the, is in the package, yes, ma'am. It's, the complete contract is in there, and that's what y'all should have gotten, but I thought you had. But we do have it because the paperwork now has to be signed and talked about, yes, ma'am, it's all that.
So Chief Johnson, you did say all three of these vehicles are going to go on patrol, like on the streets?
Whatever we get will be on patrol, absolutely. That, that's the whole purpose of replacing the ones that are out there.
What's your pleasure on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor? I move that we, uh, approve Resolution zero four two eight two zero one five A for the execution of agreement with government capital corporation to finance the acquisition of police vehicles.
Second, the move's probably second, that we approve Resolution, uh, oh four two eight two zero one five A for the execution of agreement with government capital corporation to finance the acquisition of police vehicles. The motion is second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Item number fourteen, discuss and take actual Resolution oh four two eight two zero one five B for the execution of agreement with government capital corporation to finance the acquisition of utility tractor. Now this again is a budget item, uh, we are in the position now where we are, uh, starting the moors, we've got a lot of, uh, complaints, concerns about moors. Uh, this is to get our own tractor so that our utility crew can, uh, uh, boy, and maintain some of these vacant lots and the roadways. This is a savings because we have to pay, uh, folks for, for moat and right-of-way and moat lots and, and right-of-ways and neighborhoods. This gets our tractor, which the council budgeted for, and I budgeted. So this is a budgeted item, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, Fred, if you wanna help me out here on the tractor?
Do we need information on that?
Right, but, but again.
I'm just letting people know that we didn't get the information.
Okay. Same type of procedure here. This again is, is just the financing to purchase a tractor. What Fred has done, Fred has, has gone to different tractor shops and he handled it.
One recommendation, what is it? Uh, actually, uh, the recommendation I came up with was a pretty good one, it's a, it's a Kubota, it's a eighty-five horsepower, which is actually enough horsepower, more than enough horsepower. To do what we need to do as far as putting those big type of moors that we're gonna need to go up and down the, the fairways and, and roadways and all the curbs and gutters that we have to do. Lots that the city own, uh, like I said, by buying this type of equipment is less time consuming. We would go out and, and purchase, say, a twenty, twenty-five, uh, horsepower vehicle, it would actually take more time and effort, uh, to, to handle those type of jobs that we're gonna have to do with that equipment. So I figured the, the, the larger equipment would be more productive and last longer, so.
So you have, you have the details on that?
I don't have details of that particular moor in my, in my, you know.
But you, you have, you have it at, in your, in your office, you showed it to me.
So is this just a moor or a more?
No, this is a, this is, this is, this is a tractor with the attachment is on it, it'd be brush holes and, uh, and front end load. Using, uh, primarily to clear some of those lots where people go out and, and, and leave debris and stuff all over the place. So that, that would be a, a asset.
For the people we have on staff now, can they operate?
Yes, they sure can. Yes, they, yes, they sure can. Those two sure can. Hopefully, hopefully in the, in the new fut- fut- in the near future, we will be picking up an, an, an additional employee that will al- also be qualified to operate that, that particular vehicle.
Fred, I'll also tell them that this tractor is new. And then also tell them that this tractor has a cab, air conditioning.
No, that, that tractor does have all the bells and whistles on it, air conditioning, so, to keep you out of the element. Keep you safe, safety is one, one issue, uh, that we look to, was concerned for the cab because of the walls and the bees and, and, uh, stuff like that, you know.
So what do you do with the cost?
What's the cost?
Actually, cost on, on, on that one was like forty, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, right. We, we're giving fifty. For the tractor. Same interest rate. Same payment plan, same payment, not due until February sixteen.
So we gonna have a ten-year warranty, five-year warranty?
No, you don't, well, it could go by, I think hours. It could go by hours. Engine hours. Look again, I wanna commend Fred on, he brought up a very important aspect of it, and that's like, that's like, we, he could have gotten a tractor that was, with no cab and what have you. But when you start talking, using the clean lots and what have you, that's very important because of the elements that they were subjected to, bees and what have you. But this will enable them to go in and, and we can, by being, by having our own equipment, also Fred, y'all mentioned that we'd be able to do more street makers. What that, because we can keep material on site and what the budget and what have you, and we can do more patching ourselves and be more frequent. Whereas that, as opposed to stuff getting or deteriorating, as it starts to weaken, we can address it, same with lots. We can address it before they deteriorate, we can address them while they're in a manageable state, we can keep them in a manageable state.
So you're saying we can set those lots and put leens on properly?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, anytime we go on a lot, a lean will go on it, am I right, Mr. Attorney? Definitely so. You heard your turn, yes, ma'am.
Since we, since we, Mr. Johnson, um, the, uh, the interest rate is good and the terms are good, that, that we seen, I, I don't know, and I guess I'll read you the fact. The, since it was budgeted in this budget cycle, uh, so we have a number that we budget in this budget cycle. Uh, are you gonna take that money out of this budget cycle and put it?
No, you don't take it out? Okay, no, go, go ahead, go ahead, I, I'll tell you how it works.
Are we gonna take the money or encumber it as if we're going to, to purchase it this year? Which gives us next year a savings and an advancement to put down on that payment instead of going into the twenty sixteen budget cycle, having to budget for this money, why could we not do that?
Okay. We're on a cruel basis.
Okay.
That's why. I will have to, we will have to approve, even though the payment is not due, we will approve the monthly.
Twenty fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Right, but from a cash flow standpoint, that's how this payment plan really benefits us, from a cash flow standpoint.
So you're gonna accrue it for twenty fifteen, but we're?
Well, we will approve for the months that we have.
Then we have it, but, and then we'll make one payment, the first payment will be?
Won't be due until February, right, so I benefited from a cash flow standpoint. But we will accrue monthly amounts which will, which will be, uh, processed against this year's budget.
I just didn't want us to?
Yeah.
Push it to the next year?
Exactly.
Or we could start to save the money since it's budgeted twenty fifteen?
No, I, I, but we're probably on cruel basis.
Mr. Johnson, if we approve this particular resolution, what time are you looking to have this vehicle in place?
Fred, with the friendly, he can pick it up as soon as he has the money, they're waiting on us.
Yeah, that's, they're, they're, they're delivering, they're.
They'll deliver it.
They're dropping off to us, they're right, right, right out here in front, still will.
Another question from Mr. Attletown?
No question, but just a comment, if, if the council is expected to make decisions on eighty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, we need to have the information before it's time for us to take a vote. I'm just saying.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
I'm moving to approve Resolution zero four two eight two zero one five B for execution of an agreement with government capital corporation to finance the acquisition of utility tractor.
The move is probably second, approve Resolution oh four two zero one five B for the execution of an agreement with government capital corporation to finance the acquisition of utility tractor. Your motion is second, are you ready for the question? I'll favor the pick by saying aye. Item number fifteen, hey Mr. Johnson, discuss and take actual approval of City Purview Police Department policy and decision. Chief Johnson, uh we presented some manual, had to give you, I guess, a brief overview of summary, and we've left it open for people to come by and review, uh before he can implement it, you have it adopted, so uh.
Well, did we get somebody to help some, what's his name?
He, he gave it to you last, for the last meeting, we wish you that out.
I wasn't there for the last meeting, I didn't get any information, I was supposed to go back and look at it.
We gave you all a presentation for last council meeting, we gave you a, a summary of what was in the, uh document and informed the council that the manual was available.
I'll have with me, but in the packet, before, it was an outline of what was in the manual and.
The manual was being available for a month. He told us the last meeting.
We didn't get emails or anything. I don't probably, we should have reminded people, and it was us and the people, so I'll recall that.
That our, our discussion was and what I, what I handed out and the decision was that it would be available and that if anybody needed to see it, I'd, I'd be available to, to show it, so that's, that's the way it was presented before.
So have we, we've been using a policy or procedure manual?
Uh in the minutes, in the minutes, it says, uh Chief Johnson informed the mayor and city council of purview policy, um the secret accreditation, um and Mr. Johnson. We had a copy of the manual, yeah, he gave us a copy of the manual, what was in there outlined, and he left it available for the council to come by and, and have access. Open for some parts of, so I think the attorney, you may want to speak to that, uh but, but the manual is available for the council, they're sitting there for a month, for everybody to review. Uh and everybody was given this uh policy and procedures, that's why we put it on this month's agenda, so that he could at least adopt, have it adopted, and we can go and start moving forward. Uh we, uh so that document had been available for a month, uh for the council to review.
Well, I didn't receive it, I asked again.
That was supposed to be in the packet, didn't it, passed out?
Last month. Last month.
Well, you know, some of the packets don't have everything in it, so you might need to check it, I would be forward, I would see it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I gave it out during the, during the presentation to the council, I handed everybody.
Attorney, will you talk to the manual and, and address the council on what y'all did and the process we went through so we make sure that everybody knows that this is not, this just was not a half package, actually just something that was given to die and sold out and, I mean.
Yeah, well, the chief, the uh policies and practices from the Texas.
It, it, it is, it is a policy that's been adopted by the Texas Police Chief Association in accordance with their best practices uh program, uh their recognition program. It is the state version of the CLIA national accreditation, and so the policy is in line, the policies are in line with what has been accepted as best practices.
And then we, and we took those policies and modified them so that they would be more in line with what the purview needed, because purview didn't need like all of them.
Yeah, so some of those were just were not applicable for us, but it also, uh we used that outline in order to put us, as I said before, to put us in, in line and position as we work toward. Uh if we decide to seek uh recognition status later on, we, our policy will be in place in order to, to seek that, that recognition. So those policies are in line, they've already been vetted uh by legal staff, by our legal staff, they were vetted by the Police Chiefs Association legal staff, uh so we already know that they are, they're acceptable practices. Uh I get emails every day from uh the, through the Police Chiefs Association recognizing other agencies, some larger, some smaller, uh that are being recognized. And what we're finding is that the Texas accreditation process has been accepted nationwide, many of the agencies that were nationally CLIA accredited in Texas are also now seeking that double accreditation through the Police Chiefs Association because of their standards. And so we wanted to be in line with that, so we took that policy, they, they produced a policy uh for smaller agencies, and we took that policy and we adopted it, we, again, we, we did some editing to make it fit more appropriate to, to what we do here. Uh but again, we, we left it basically intact from the standpoint that we wanted to be able to uh at some point buy for that accreditation, that recognition status. So that's why we went to that model as opposed to some other models. I, I think it, it would put us in a position, uh again, later on, if we decided to, to seek credit, uh that accreditation status, we won't have to completely redo our policy. It, it already, it has the numbering system, the references and all of those, so when they come in, even, even when T-CO does their inspection, they can come and they can look at that manual and they automatically know that our policies are in line with what the state, what the Police Chiefs Association has recognized as best practice policy.
Did you go through accreditation before of the police department?
Yes, we, we did the national accreditation and it was part of my beer and call station, and before I left, we were beginning uh to work on doing the double accreditation, matter of fact, they're up this year to do the double accreditation. I got an email today, the Comro PD got re-recognized, they're in the recognized, so there are a lot of departments large, some larger, some smaller than a, that are in this recognition program, so that I, I think would put us in a, in a favorable light.
Uh one of the items that, that we adopted in our minutes, uh was presentation by Chief Johnson of City Purview Police Department on a policy manual. Uh Chief Johnson informed the mayor and city council that City Purview policy is to seek accreditation. Councilman Roland asked Chief Johnson if the po- uh police policy has been submitted to the ci- city attorney for review, Chief Johnson said yes. At the next city council meeting on April twenty eighth, twenty fifteen approval will be sought from the City of Purview on its uh ci- uh police policy. So this was in our minutes, and discussed and left during the last meeting, and Mr. said yes, something we had, see who's gonna do it this week. Um Chief, uh Mr. Johnson, I'll run you a question.
So, so this won't be distributed to the officers until after we approve it?
Uh, uh, yes, and, and, and on- once you approve it, we will uh issue it to the officers and give them uh two weeks period to, to become familiar with it uh before it goes into actual effect. We, we, we're currently working on a policy though that was last reviewed in nineteen eight seven, was the last one that you got approved, so we, it, we, we, we really need to move forward.
You said the last time we got the policy approved, was with policy?
The, the policy that, that, that we're currently working on that it was approved by the council was nineteen eighty-seven, signed by Chief Stewart.
I don't think so.
Yeah, because we were told not to use the other one.
Oh, you were told not to use it, but it wasn't the last one that was?
Well, because it did, it wasn't approved by the council is what I was told, so my direction was not to use it.
I don't think so, the chief is right, the former chief is right there, so.
All I know is that's what I was instructed, that we use the policy, because there was no approval and the, and the ordinance required it being approved by the council.
So is it all gonna be on video, is it gonna be a written manual?
Man.
Is it gonna, you gonna put this, give this to the officers on the video, or will it be a written manual, they have to flip the pages?
The policy manual? No ma'am, the policy manual won't be on video, no.
Oh, yeah?
Councilman Miranda?
I'm moving to approve the City Purview Police Department policy and procedures manual.
Second?
The move is probably second, approve the City Purview Police Department policy and procedures manual, the motion is second, are you ready for the question? I'll favor the pick by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, because I haven't seen it.
Thank you, Chief Johnson, uh department head reports, Mr. J.J. Johnson, first up.
Okay, uh, good evening to the mayor, uh city council members, citizens of Purview, department heads, and friends of the area, and other city employees. We're in the sixth month of this fiscal period, at this time, the halfway point. Uh if you turn to your, uh, your uh financial package, page one, you'll see that as far as funds go, we have, we've taken a total of a million eight versus a budget of a million three. That's a favorable of four hundred seventy-one thousand dollars, and again, I'll just reiterate that that's the big spending because of the property tax collection. From a expense standpoint, we're at a, a million six versus a million three, so that's a favorable two ninety-three. And again, part of that right there is due to the fact that we still haven't, I think we just, we still haven't paid the university for some water treatments. Still waiting on the bill, I think it's coming in this month, I'll check with the city secretary and see how it's come in. It's come in, okay, but I expect that to be around forty to fifty, be around fifty thousand dollars probably, because it's about a three or four month period, so it's gonna be a big bill. So uh that's gonna affect the amount of total expenses that we incur. If you go to page three, page three, we always like page three because that's how much money we have in our depositories. Uh currently to date, we have two million six, again, a major portion of that is a general obligation bond, uh you all did approve over two hundred and two thousand, and those funds will come from the general obligation bond, a million oh forty, they will come out at a million oh forty-seven, okay? I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, one item, I see Ms. Alexander sitting in here, and I'm just gonna jump over to it on page six, in the municipal court area. For quite a few months there, on a current month basis, municipal court was unfavorable, but if you look at this month, the month of March, under revenue, the very first column on the actual, you'll see twelve thousand eight sixty-six versus a budget of seven thousand five hundred dollars. And uh, well, thank you, Ms. Alexander, y'all doing a good job over there, and again, that's to the police department too. The police department also in that revenue, and, and, and again, that's a result of traffic administration, traffic administration. Again, that's keeping the county safe, that's what that is, that's keeping the county safe, that's not out just purposely writing tickets, that's keeping the, keeping you all safe. That's to keep the city, excuse, the city, right, I saw Mr. Barnett there, he was talking about the county too, so you absolutely right, but again, that's keeping the city safe, and, and all the students safe too. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh on the franchise taxes, we do have a favorable position, and on sales tax, it's favorable, so those other two tax revenues are favorable through uh the midway point. Uh everything else, we're doing fine as far as the city is concerned, I don't have any other particular items to point out. Uh Ms. Herden is already pointing out the nineteen thousand dollars under legal, which does appear on page six, thank you, Ms. Herden, that, that is there. Uh and again, that's the variable piece of your legal system, that's not the fix, that's the, when I say variable, that again is based on the amount of legal activity that's brought, that the city has to deal with. Uh and that, and that, when I say variable, the more legal activity that the city has to deal with, that drives that cost up, okay? Uh from a courtroom standpoint, uh we're, we're just, we're right on budget from a courtroom standpoint, okay?
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
And that, that's about all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Chalita Alexander, administrative report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, don't have a whole lot to report, I would like to say thank you to the citizens and to the staff of the administration for working through this interim period, and I would like to say that um we are working with processes and procedures and trying to bring some educated systems up to date. We're doing some training and some continuous improvement, that's our buzzword, continuous improvement, and increased customer service. So if any of you have spoken with me, you know that's one of our endeavors to increase our customer service levels. Uh I would like to commend the staff of the administration, because I kind of underestimated some of the things that they encounter every day, and so I have a greater appreciation for that. There are a few things that I have been working on, and you've mentioned some of them in Mr. Johnson's report, also with the High Point lift station, and a few things that I'll also cover during executive session. I'll, if, if I may address the citizens, there are some customer service forms on the front desk, the same form is on our website, and that form is there to, you all tell us what it is that we can improve upon for you all, and for you all. So if there's anything that, that you see that we can do better or do more of, or some innovation, we want to consider that. And so uh we are in an interim period with the city secretary in position, and um that's about all I have to say about that. Judge Overstreet is not here to give the municipal court report, and I don't want to do that, but I would like to say that um, that things are looking up in the municipal court, and it's a collective effort of everyone. It's not just a matter of writing citations, it's a matter of collecting on them and resolving cases, so unless you have any questions, you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Alexander?
Thank you.
Police report, Chief Johnson?
The county have the copy of my, my written report, uh you see there's been some activity within the city, all the last month, it's been crowded business. There, there are some, in some areas, some significant uh increase in activities. A lot of that is due to uh I increased efforts to, in traffic enforcement and those types of things, and I, I'd like to reiterate that what we do is, is never, from my perspective, from the, from the perspective of generating revenue, that's a byproduct, but that's not what we, why we do what we do. Our, our perspective is public safety, and so what we have found in that is that we have been more proactive in finding uh wanted persons, recovering narcotics and stolen property and that type of thing, so. Uh we're, we're proud of, of our officers uh for being receptive to what we've asked them to do, uh they've been very active, and we've, we've been working on a lot of different areas trying to uh improve what we're doing and, and find new ways of approaching, reaching out to our citizens and, and doing what we do in a way that is, is fair. I had the privilege of representing the City Purview, the Purview Police Department at the end of April, uh first part of, of month, at the Texas Police Chiefs Association Annual Conference. We had an opportunity to talk about a lot of different things that are facing law enforcement, not only in, in the state of Texas, but on, on a national level, and one of the things that you will probably be hearing more about is a, is a, something that they're, we're calling procedural fair policing, procedural fair uh justice. And that's just simply uh an enhancement or another cog in the wheel of community policing, and that is, is, is what we're thinking, is, is part of the reason why we're seeing some of the, the things that were happening across the country. Had an opportunity to have some conversations with some of the, the other chiefs, particularly major city chiefs, and uh we, we had the privilege of having the uh past president from the International Association Chiefs of Police, uh that is from Texas, uh that was there at the conference, and talked to them about uh having the, the police chief organizations uh kind of get out in front of, of some things that you're seeing and being able to be more active in, in writing a script on how we need to change and address some of those things that we're seeing that, that are happening in policing. Uh so we had an opportunity to have some input into that, uh as possible, there possibly been, been involved on some of the statewide committees, uh involved with, with some of those things, but uh we had a department meeting early in the week, and that's one of the things that we talked about is, is how do we interact with our, with our citizens? And how, what, what do they expect of us, and, and what can we do to ensure that we're being fair, that we do our job that, that, in, in a way that is, is professional, and but while at the same time uh serving our, our community and making sure that our citizens are safe, uh but that our, our context with our citizens uh don't necessarily have to be negative. And so what we're striving to just get better is if we do those things, so uh like I said, I'm, I'm proud of our officers, they've been responsive to what we've asked them to do, and we'll continue to, to get better and work towards that, but that's something that we will be introducing more of, is that, is that mindset of being fair in what we do, uh and making sure. And making sure that we're doing that. That's one thing that our policy will help us ensure, that, that we are fair and correct in, in how we do internally, that we treat each other fair ins, internally. And externally, when we're, when we're contacting citizens and working in the community, that we're doing so in, in a fair and just way. So we've, we've had some things that, that have occurred in our city that, that uh, are concerning. And we're working with the resources that we have to try to address those things. We've been working with some of the apartment complex owners and those types of things where we've had problems and issues. Had several meetings, luncheons, and you know, we spent a lot of time there talking with them about, you know, how can we work together to, to, to resolve some of these issues and work with it. I, I wanna show you some things, I asked you if you could just take these and just pass them down, just to give you an idea. This is a, a case of, that we're, it's an active case, so we won't really talk about it at this, the particulars of it. But just to give you an idea, this is what we're encountering, encountering on a regular basis. Uh, this is a case where we, we made an arrest early in the week, uh, uh, last week actually, uh, where we recovered some narcotics, but we, we recovered some weapons, which we're encountering a lot. And not just weapons, we're encountering automatic weapons. Uh, high-capacity uh, handguns. You'll see photographs in there of a, of a, of a handgun that was introduced into a situation last Friday that had the potential of creating a very volatile situation. Just by, by the grace of God, we, we were, we, we were alerted and responded and got there in time before things got any further out of hand. But uh, I, I just want you to know that, that the officers that, that we have here are doing a, a fantastic job, in my opinion, with the resources we have, we work in, in conjunction with uh, the other law enforcement agencies, sheriff's office and, and wall or PD in particular, are very responsive and, and helping us do what we do. But our officers are there on the scene and, and, and working to keep our citizens safe. One, one of the things that is very concerning is that proliferation of, of the automatic weapons that we're seeing a lot of uh, lately. And so that, that's something that we, that we're concerned about, and most of those, almost every time, it is connected to narcotics. Uh, that, that one picture in there that you see of the baby bottle, that is uh, Similac. No, it, it is uh, what they're calling syrup, is, is codeine, uh, something that's very, they do it in, in a, it's a very concentrated, they mix it with Sprite or something like that, but it, it, it causes hallucinations and all sorts of things. We're seeing that a lot, and, and it causes them to act very irrationally. And so when we're encountering those people, uh, they become very difficult to, to deal with. We had a crowd of about almost forty people last Friday uh, that this stemmed from, uh, that was a clash between two different factions. And they were all, as this one gun got introduced into the situation, they began to text each other. They're, they're friends to bring guns, and so we happened to get there in time before all of that, where, where they were able to manifest itself. But uh, you know, so it, it, it is there in progress, and we're, we're working as hard as we can to try to address those issues.
Can you, can you, the staff that they're on the new officers?
They are in training currently, in, in field training, they're doing very well. So uh, you know, hopefully that, you know, that hadn't anything uh, out of ordinary happen at this point in time, but they're, they're all excited about being here and, and we're, they're working well. Yes, or they, but they are in train, so they're with another officer, yes.
Uh, your words about uh, having a department that is fair and just as important and timely, definitely based upon things that are going on in Baltimore and that going around the country. With the pictures you showed us on one hand, we do uh, respect uh, the job that, that, that the police officers are here to do, which is protect and serve our community. But uh, we also just would hope that, and make sure that every opportunity or every encounter with a person, that police officers are going through whatever process to make sure that it is fair and just on both parts. And so we know that based upon everything that's going on in Baltimore, that stemmed from the incident. And so it, it, I like the opportunity that you talk about uh, communicating to all the officers in, in the police department about being just and fair, because that's important. We're in a largely minority community, meaning, largely minority community, and sometimes we are uh, harsh on each other. And so hopefully that everyone uh, has a, a, a reputable encounter with the Prairie Police Department, that they wish that you would get anywhere else.
We, 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 we talk a lot about those, those sorts of things, uh, because it is important. And I, and I would suggest to you that in almost every case that you're seeing, that is seen in the national news, what you're seeing is a systemic problem. That, that one incident might have been the, the flag point, but you're seeing the results of something that's been going on for a long time. And that's one of the things that, that we want to not have happen. Uh, you, we, I, it, it is absolutely, it's not just a good idea, it's necessary and critical that the police department be an integral part of the community, that we know each other, uh, that, that we're involved in, in the community. That, as I've said since I've been here, that we are your police department, we're not an occupying force. We, we're here to do a job, we're here to commu, keep the community safe, but you can do that in a way that you don't have to mistreat people to do that. Uh, so, so we, we, I, I, I am uh, all about uh, being fair. We, we can do our job and we can be effective in what we do, but that does not have to translate into mistreatment. So we, we talk about that a lot, because I know that if I don't talk about it, they won't know that, that's, that's what their expectations are. So we try to model that behavior and so, so they'll understand what, what it is. And, and I don't see a problem with that, let me just make that clear. I, I, I'm, I'm proud of our officers, they, they go out and they do what they do on a day-to-day basis. We get very few complaints, and most of the time, those complaints are resolved very easily and very quickly. And they are not by our officers being discourteous or being mistreated. Sometimes people don't like getting, you know, getting citations or getting arrested, but you'll find from the prosecutor's office that uh, I was talking to Mr. Masters a couple weeks ago, and they're complimenting our officers on the increased number of cases that were followed. And the reports that they're getting, all those things that we've been working on since the very beginning to make sure that when we file a case, that it can be prosecuted, that we have the right evidence, that, that we're, you know, that we're doing things in, in the right way. We wanna put Prairie in, in, in a positive light. Uh, I, I, I believe that in, in most communities, uh, where you have a police department that is, that is active, that is well-trained, that is conducting themselves in a positive way, it reflects throughout the whole city. I, I, that, I, I believe that. I believe the police department can be part of the economic driver of a community, because when people are looking to decide whether they're gonna have a business or where they're gonna live there, they wanna know, are they gonna be safe? Are my children gonna be safe going to school? You know, I, I, yesterday I spent some time on the phone talking with a young lady, the, the, the mother of one of the gentleman that was arrested in this case. And, and her concern was that, you know, she couldn't believe her son was involved in this. And I sat down with the young man, went, went in the restroom, we talked with, talked for quite a long time. Uh, he's a senior at the university, uh, you know, just got, kinda got caught up. And uh, but I, I believe that this is one of those kinds of experiences, that once he's worked through this thing, I think, I don't think he'll do this again. And after talking to his mom, I'm pretty sure he ain't gonna, he's not gonna do this again, she, she's coming to get him. Uh, but, but we, we try to have that kind of, that, that kind of effect. I had a, a young lady call me and sent me some information about some things that she had seen on social media. And from our conversation last year, uh, she said, I, I don't think you'd be happy with this happening, so I mean, you need to make sure you know about those kinds of things. Those are the kind of relationships we try, we try to make. Again, when we go out and we contact people, we try to do so in a positive way. And uh, you know, if we have to do enforcement, that's, that's what we do, that, you know, that's, that, that is. But by the same token, we can do so in a way that's, that's fair. And that's something that we're gonna be spending a lot of time talking about. The Police Chiefs Association has assigned a whole committee, and the next two years, their project is to begin to infuse that into organizations, that procedurally fair way that we treat people. And one of the main pillars of that is to give people opportunity to have their say. You know, it's something as simple as a traffic stop, to let them tell you, why did I run that stop sign? It might not matter at the end of the day, but I just feel better if I had an opportunity to get my side of the story in, you know? So, so if, we, we don't have to be so, so robotic in what we do. We, we can be more interactive, yes.
Uh, well, first I wanna say that I have, I have seen a lot more community policing going on over the past couple months with the constable's office and Prairie. But I've also seen the DA's office pulling people over. So my question is, how can the DA's office pull somebody over and then prosecute? Isn't that, isn't that kind of?
But, cause, cause the DA probably won't be prosecuting those, those cases, if they're doing traffic enforcement, that doesn't go through the district attorney. But you know, they, they are, they are officers that are commissioned police officers, they are state police officers, so they do have jurisdiction.
So what happens if they pull somebody over and it turns into more than just a routine traffic stop? And it ends up something that we go into the DA's office?
That, that'll be up to them to handle, I, I don't have any control over that at all. That, that is, but they, they do have the authority to, to most DA's office, very seldom you're gonna see a DA's office have their law enforcement arm out working traffic, that's a little bit unusual in my experience. But it, it is within their authority to, to do so. It's not my preference, to be honest with you, but uh, that's their, that's their choice.
Uh, Chief, can we set up some possible meet and greet with the uh, with the police department? We can take them out to different subdivisions, like you're doing now, we had a national night out, which was very successful, to kind of introduce people to each other and stuff. Is it possible, since we have some new officers on the team, to kind of take them out to different uh, subdivision, to set different neighborhoods and kind of introduce them? So we can get to know who they are, we can get to know who they are?
Sure, sure. Uh, and that, and we can do that, but in, in the, I guess, not so much long-term now, but, but ultimately what, what our, one of the steps that we intend to do is, is implement what we're calling geographical policing in that, uh, that officer that's assigned to that particular subdivision, whatever, that they'll know that officer, because that'll be their responsibility. And, and so they'll know that this officer is assigned to this area, and they will patrol the entire city. But they'll have a, an, a particular area, geographical area of responsibility, that they'll be there if they're, and it won't just be uh, with traditional police enforcement, if, you know, if, if, if the street lights are off, that they need to know about that. If the water's running down the street and there's a water leak, they'll, they'll need to be able to let the right person know how, how to address those things, so.
Your, your entire staff that's able to participate for coming. Now, this may be a question from Ms. Alexander and not for you, but when permits are issued for the parties like the big uh, lot over there on, on ten ninety-eight, can we include in there, maybe the, the attorney can help, uh, cause that they must clean up? Because that's not fair to the property owners and surrounding owners who have to come in and clean up after these people are paid to get into a party that somebody else had, and the other property owners have to come and clean up. And if they don't clean it up, they don't get another permit. Can we do something like that? It's like, you go to rent a cabin, I know we put this stuff into the paperwork, whatever, if you didn't leave it clean, you don't get it again.
We, we've had some, some extensive conversations lately about that, that, that thing. And it's not only that, just, just the whole overall operation of, of, of that. So I, I do hear what you're saying and, as well as other things that affect the neighborhood around that, and so we, we.
It's gonna make the city and the communities look horrible. So if they can do something like that before issuing another permit, you got to clean up.
We had that conversation earlier today. We sure did, and, and that was part of the agreement before we signed up on the permit, that, that there were some things that, that were required that they do. So.
They don't clean up, we let you know, Ms. Alexander?
You let me know, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll address that, but, but yeah. Uh, some of the people that have not been uh, uh, honest with us in the past, well, won't be getting a permit again, because that has been the issue, not only with that, but, but with the things that they're certainly gonna do as far as the level of security and all of those sorts of things. When, when they sign that permit, uh, well, my expectations are that the whole thing is that when, when they, from the beginning to the end, and one, one of the problems we were asking that even when they had security, if the security was from this time to this time, when the party was supposedly turning out, all the people were leaving, and they were leaving our people to have to deal with it. Well, no, no, that's not how that's gonna play. So, so we, we are trying to address those, those issues.
Any other questions for Chief Johnson? Thank you, Chief Johnson.
Thank you.
Public works, Ms. Alexander?
Mayor, council members, citizens, friends of Prairie, good evening. Uh, I guess first of all, I wanna, I wanna thank y'all uh, for rerouting of that, that lift station. Thank you for that, that equipment also. Thank you, thank you, uh, both, both of them are much needed for our, our data operation, so, thanks again. First of all, I wanna, wanna talk about some old business, some stuff that we, we've been doing in the past, uh, and brought it up earlier. I've been approved to have some smoke testing done in, in the community to try to locate some of this infiltration that we're getting in our collection sys, system, in our, in our sewer. And, and what that means is, we're trying to find a place where water's getting into the pipes from rain. And actually, that, that goes into what we was talking about, the bill for the university. So when it rains, we're actually paying the university to treat rainwater. And if we can find those holes and, and, and crevices that that water's getting into, that should cut back on, on some of the building. I've, I've been looking over uh, 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 the meter that, that our collection of water goes into at the university. And we are, we are treating a lot of rainwater when we get those two and three-inch rainfall. Uh, where we average on a, maybe daily basis of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand gallons of, of water a day. Uh, when it rains, we are somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred to five hundred thousand gallons a day. So that gives you a kind of idea of what we're doing with uh, this rainwater that's falling out of the sky. It's going into our collection system. Uh, so hopefully, and well, that, that will, that will, we will locate some of, some, hopefully all.
Can you tell them about the, the process of the smoke?
Well, what that, what that smoke does, well, what we do, we open up manholes and, and charge the manholes with smoke, blow smoke into the manholes and, and seal the manholes off. If there's a leak in that section of, of, of pipe that we have isolated, that smoke will surface. Once that smoke surfaces, then we can, we can pinpoint, this is where we need to dig, this is what we need to replace. Instead of taking a section of, of pipe and digging that whole section up, which is costing a lot of time and money, and maybe not even produce a, a result. So that, that smoke testing is, is very important to what we're doing. It, there are other means such as cameraing, but you take a camera and run it through the line, which is, which is very effective, but it's very costly. So we wanna do the smokes before we can, you know, attempt to do anything else.
So it's called the cheapest of the, of the methods, right?
It's one of the less expensive, yes sir, we don't wanna go cheap, we wanna go less expensive.
If we find infiltration, I'm thinking about this, you know, for, for years of when we have transitioned from serving in Trenton and, and this process of now having our own in-house department. If we find infiltration, what is our process? Are we gonna, cause I don't know if we're gonna, are we gonna be able to replace all, all, all these at one time? And so the question, so that's one question. The second question is if we know this infiltration based upon what our meter has been doing over a period of months, and we know we have a rain, do we not have a rate at the university that's a lower rate for rainwater versus just like as if uh, like a, a, a resident has a, a regular meter and then they have like a, a garden meter, there's two different rates?
To my knowledge of only one rate. Uh, but, the, the answer, the answer, that other, I guess, that other part of the question, if and when we do find this, this, this area where smoke is, is coming up, what we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll fake, uh, bids or quotes, uh, on, on what it would, what, what, what a contractor will come out and and possibly dig that up and repair. Uh, and I guess the amount, and how much we fix it, how much we repair is gonna be based on what we have in Spain at the time. It, it may, it may be over a, 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 a period of time, but if we get, if we start here, we ought to finish at some point.
This hill may have, in some sections, clay pipe and, and that's, that's part of the, the problem, I believe. And then, uh, some of these lift stations that, uh, were on the map, some of them had eroded. And so, we had water just pouring into it, and we think we, we found some of it. The smoke test will give us a chance to really isolate those infiltration points and add to the integrity of our system. That's our biggest utility, so this is very important, so soon as it dries a little bit, then we can, uh, he can also provide to proceed with the smoke.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's, that's enough for the bad concerning news. I have, I do have some good news. Good news, good news, good news. The good news is, on, on, uh, on, uh, April, April tenth, we, we had an inspection by the Kentucky Commission of five hundred quality, T C Q. And, uh, it was, it was on to our water distribution system. And I'm happy to say that the city of Prairie View is still a superior water system. And, and, uh, in that inspection, uh, they, they concentrated on, on housekeeping, uh, records keeping, uh, different types of, uh, procedures that we use to, to, uh, disinfect, uh, the water system. And we were superior in our work, all the way. That's, that's, that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, Mr. Bluff, I think you said after, it's a crew of two. And they do it all, uh, from, uh, doing a lot of repairs and ma- maintenance of our system. And plus, they'd be doing a lot of the, the mowing, mowing work, to patching and changing our signs. Uh, we bought a sign for a lot of the subdivisions, so a lot of signs that are, uh, worn out, and they, they'd be replacing those too, so. They got a lo- a long list of stuff that they've been doing, so thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before we go into executive session, uh, we wanna give our council members a chance to do their report. Who started, Councilman Monroe?
Good evening, citizens. Just an update for the month, uh, work, uh, work with a, a midterm program we have called BQ, Black and Brown Brothers, which is located on, uh, Prairie View University's, uh, campus. It's, it's a, a period level midterm program that we created last year, me and some, uh, students on campus that we mentor, well, doctoral students that we mentor, uh, graduate and undergraduate students, and they're supposed to peer mentor themselves. Um, we have, we hold post monthly meetings and been having activities on campus. We, I went to the candidates meeting greet, uh, held by the Retired Teachers Association, uh, um, and, uh, went to that, uh, engagement. Um, went to Chicago for A R A, which is the American Education Research Association. It's an organization of about fifteen thousand, um, doc- doctoral students and, uh, doc, uh, professors, uh, that present research. Uh, we took about sixteen, um, doctoral students and undergraduate students from Prairie View University, uh, to present, present research. Again, you know, Boy Scouts meets here on the first, uh, meets here, meets here on the first and third Wednesday. Please come out and support, we have a bank account at the Prairie View Federal Credit Union. Um, and the Boy Scouts will be, uh, also, uh, selling popcorn to help, uh, pay for their way to camp this year. Last weekend, they just came back from, uh, Canoea Reef, which was in, uh, down the street. Camp Allen, um, so again, if you wanna get involved, don't know how to get involved, please let us know. On the fire department, we meet on, um, every Wednesday at the, uh, Prairie, uh, Fire Department, the Association. Um, again, please come out, elections on May ninth. Uh, early voting started on Monday, um, it was on campus Monday and Tuesday, and the remaining of the week will be here at City Hall. Please come out and exercise your right to vote. Um, if you don't know, Industry Day will be on campus on May sixth. Uh, if you're involved in, um, business or wanna get in, in for more information or involve, uh, the, uh, Prairie View University and Texas A and M University will be co-hosting something called Industry Day. Um, I'll be hosting again Business Leaders Roundtable on, uh, at, for those who've been attending, um, uh, next month in, in the month of May. Uh, that's where we have an opportunity for business leaders in our community to get together and talk with city staff on how to help, uh, build better relationships with, uh, peo- with, with business people and, and move business in our city. Um, they're also, they're, uh, doing business style spot bid fair, gonna be May eleventh through the twelfth on Prairie View University's campus. If you're not familiar with that, there, that's gonna give local entrepreneurs who in this community or in Walla County the opportunity to engage with the procurement people at Prairie View University. As we understand that, it's the number one employer in the county, they're, they, they sell, they buy products and services. And so, here's an opportunity for you to meet with the purchasing manager. Um, again, the Small Business Development Center is doing hub certification. If you wanna get your company hub certified to do business with the state, um, here's an opportunity for you to do that as well. As you know, um, I'm the Prairie View Vice Che- uh, Vice President for the Chamber. We belong to Tac Tech Association, Af- African American Chamber of Congress. We represent about twenty-two, uh, chambers around the state. We had our, uh, M O U signing, uh, March thirty-first at the Capitol. We had sixteen statewide agencies, Texas A and M University System was also there, that was represented, that signed, uh, M O Cs with our organization. From that, we produced a, uh, comprehensive, uh, agency report summary. And, uh, if you wanna get a copy or, uh, some information, it'll be at City Hall. Again, my name is Brian Rowland, thank you for the opportunity to serve you, and again, if you see my name on a ballot, don't forget.
First of all, I'd like to say greetings to all the citizens, uh, it's always a pleasure to serve. Um, I wanted to commend Mrs. Sharp once again for her efforts in the community, cause she's had numerous, numerous, um, events where they've been out cleaning the streets her, and I know their neighbors were out there cleaning. You know, they, they're cutting up trees, they're, they're doing everything that, that it takes, and, uh, that's what, that's what this community needs, is people getting involved, and she's not afraid to get her hands dirty and get out there and, um, make stuff happen. So, I commend her again for, for her efforts in the community. Um, as Constable Rowland reiterated, it's election time, you know, doesn't matter who you go for, as long as you vote. You know, to go out and, and whatever direction that you wanna see this city move into, that's who you vote for, you know? Um, it's, it's imperative to encourage people to vote, and it's imperative that you continue to have a voice. You know, when we first start, when I first got on council, when I came to these meetings, they were empty. So, the fact that every, every month that we come in here and, you know, it's standing room only, that means the people are actually waking up, they wanna be involved, so I commend you all for continually coming and making your voice be heard. And, uh, I assure you that your concerns do not fall on deaf ears. So, I thank you for continually being part of this, cause all the way we move forward is if we do it collectively, so thank you for allowing me to serve. And, uh, it's always, always a blessing.
Good evening, I want to once again thank the police, our police department for their continued involvement in the community. Also, I would like to thank two of the people I see sitting out here in the audience, Mr. Rockwell, would you stand please? And Mr. Roden, would you stand please? These are two of the people who helped to sponsor the luncheon where we, our, yes, would you stand just to be recognized? These are two of the apartment owners that helped to sponsor the luncheon. So, like you said, that community involvement, like you sharp getting out there cleaning it up, police getting involved in the community, so people will get to know you, you get to know them, that, that's a good thing. Also, uh, the, uh, farmer's market, you've seen the people out there at Hope Church, don't just pass by. Stop them by some of it, like I said, I had never heard of any purple potatoes. Potato was purple, try it. At the bottom of, of, of the page, on the second page of my report, uh, Mr., um, Alan, is Alan? Alexander, I'm sorry, I just had a senior moment. Mr. Alexander, hopefully, these pictures won't be in my next report, because the, uh, the easements are well, well overgrown, the city is looking terrible, but now that we have some new equipment, hopefully, that will improve. Also, there's a ditch there, I think, uh, Mayor, that, that water was coming over on Thompson and Eccles, and it was undermining the street, so they just dredged it out, but they dredged a ditch. Now, it's a place where we're gonna have lots and lots of mosquitoes, cause that water's not going anywhere. When it rains hard, it now comes across the street all in duplex behind the church, so we need to work on that. But, uh, let's work on beautifying this city, and if we all pitch in and help, I think it'll, it'll be a lot better. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pleasant and wonderful evening once again, friends and neighbors. Uh, I promised to be extremely brief, I don't have much on my list, uh, but I had an opportunity to represent the, uh, the city at the, uh, eighteen ninety-one grant, uh, program in which I did draw the proclamation, and I'm so happy that Mrs. Sykes was there to, uh, recognize it, and I, I did my usual, uh, Lionel Gazelle story, and I, I received a standing ovation, but that wasn't as, uh, delight, as delightful as tonight, when we brought the young students in that have been representing the, uh, the whole community. And this community got up and gave them a well-deserved round of applause. I wanna thank you all very much for taking care of those young people. Uh, they couldn't have done all this stuff by themselves, so they know that it's taken the whole village to, to raise them. Uh, I'm working with Economic Development, uh, four B, we are starting a series of, uh, stakeholders meetings, and these are gonna be unique. These are not where we're gonna come out and tell people what we plan to do, we come in to listen to our neighbors and our friends. Because we realize that we have a lot of plans, a lot of ideas in place, but we need to spend time listening to one another, having communication going back and forth, so we're excited about that. Uh, June, earlier June this month, Mr. Mayor, I had an opportunity to go around to some of the, the city staff, and I passed them a little thank you note during the, uh, Administrative Professional Day, on behalf of all the council, because we do have a very good staff here at the city, and we need to just tell them thank you sometimes, so during our professional administrative day, we kinda stopped and kinda greeted them and tell them thank you very much. Uh, one of the things I'm working on, Mrs. Alexander, is that I'm working on trying to develop some call, uh, code purple. You know, we have the code red, where you send out telephone calls, well, we wanna develop an e-blast system, where we can share with everybody our beautiful newsletter, different activities like that, so hopefully, we have the, the code purple in place, that will go with the purple uh, potatoes that we're getting from the farmer's market. Everything can be purple in Prairie, and I'll change my jacket from gold to purple as well. Uh, uh, we, we, we're working very diligently right now, hoping to have out, uh, in the month of, uh, August, a, a city welcome guide. We're working on a welcome guide to let people know when you come to the city of Prairie View, this area can do business in the city of Prairie View. And, you know, that's how different things that's going on in our community, so if you're interested in helping us with a welcome guide, let us know. I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Roberts, uh, who's a part of Economic Development, I'm gonna ask him to help us out with that. If you're interested in working on the welcome guide, we're gonna have a real nice slick welcome guide that is gonna profile, unlike, you wanna con- uh, unlike Walla County, profile all of our businesses and churches and different organizations at City of Prairie. Uh, the Walla County left a lot of our good stuff out, we gonna make sure we put all our good stuff in, so we looking forward to that. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm surprised by you mentioning, but during the month of April, uh, is basically charter, that's when the city of Prairie was chartered and, 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 and got its, uh, its charter. And I think it's appropriate that we wish the city of Prairie a happy birthday, uh, uh, during this month, so happy birthday, City of Prairie. May the first, uh, I know Commissioner Bennett is gonna be there, Mayor Jackson is gonna be there, but they're gonna have the Highway Thirty-six, uh, A Coalition meeting on the campus. And it's a small fee of seventy-five dollars, but this is where to talk about development coming through our city of Prairie. So, I wanna encourage everybody, if you have an opportunity, go to the Coalition Thirty-six A and come join us on Friday as we talk about, uh, development that is gonna impact our whole region, so this will give us a very, very good time. And then on Sunday, uh, we don't have one set up yet, but we're planning to work and have one set up, but we're gonna try to join in with the National Lemonade Day. Where we're gonna encourage young people to open up ye- lemonade stands, and, uh, you can come, you can get some lemonade, and we're gonna help young people start to become entrepreneurs, so that we can start seeing our money begin to circulate in the city of Prairie. And talk about circulating in the city of Prairie, we're working on the month of June and July, Abide P V campaign. That's those two months are the two months where we don't have a lot of traffic in the city of Prairie. And we need to kinda keep our business in Prairie so we can keep our stores open up. We don't have many stores, but if we can show the owners that we support them by doing those two months, go down and buy some stuff from Ring and Reader. Uh, we oughta host the next one of those law enforcement days, so we can, uh, keep Ring and Reader open up and, and not only that, but kinda patronize P V grocery and all those other different businesses that are coming, because your sales tax dollars stays in our community, work for our communities, we wanna kinda keep those things going around. Uh, and I, I, I've, I called, Mr. Mayor, I am so grateful for this, uh, small token of appreciation from the city. Uh, 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 I, I don't know if I'm gonna take a shower tonight, or, or, but I'll tell you one tomorrow, because I, I, I really enjoyed this. I wanna thank y'all very much for this, uh, beautiful medal, and hopefully, I can write the, uh, the city tractor, what have you, what have you.
All I have to say, if you, if you wanna have a voice in the city, the city council, come out and cast your votes early as possible, to make your, your voice known.
Thank you, thank you to everyone. Uh, Mayor's report, I wanna, uh, thank the council, uh, for your resolutions on, uh, the police cars and the tractor. I think that helps us out a great deal. Thank you for hiring the extra officers, and you see Chief Johnson is putting it to good use. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, too, Ms. Hardness for her work in the community. Uh, she does a lot of work, they did some great work over there on Pine Street, I think this car is not that here over there. Uh, they cleaned that up real good, and, uh, you, and the students should be highly commended. And those are the young people we need to bring up here, so that the citizens can see them, so, uh, please, let's keep that in mind. They, they need to be recognized for, for what they're doing. Uh, city staff, I wanna thank y'all, uh, they work hard, uh, they work hard on customer service and, uh, thanks to, uh, their leadership, they're, they're getting the training that they need from the police, Mr. Alexander, Ms. Alexander, and the things they're doing. So, I wanna thank the staff who's doing, y'all do a lot, and y'all endure a lot, so we wanna thank y'all for your work. Uh, as you can tell, our legal environment has increased, uh, it, it's not setting well with everybody, but we're in that type of environment. Uh, everything carries a legal ramifications, so some of the things that, uh, decisions we have to make, we always consult our limited advisors. And that's, that's advice we give, so, uh, we're gonna follow that, because they'll, they'll have to represent us in court. And so, we're concerned about the liability on the tax pay. Uh, again, uh, we'd have to develop a policy, uh, for utilizing this facility. I know we, we moved in, we got used to it, and we're doing a lot of events here, but we'd have to take the time and have a workshop and come up with a policy on who can use and how can use, that, that hasn't been done yet, there are a lot of things we have to get done. Uh, and I know you played some fool, but that's one of the things, as you can see, it comes up, and people will charge us on the policy, so we need to develop that. Again, that's gonna probably be a legal fee, because we have to get it approved. So, just keep in mind, if we develop these policies, they have to pass legal muster. And each time we send something to them, uh, they hit that little meter and it, and it starts, and, uh, it's not cheap. Uh, infrastructure improvement, that's been one of the things that we've concentrated on, is getting an infrastructure place, and Mr. Alexander's doing a great job. Uh, he had Mr. Steps and so, Mr. Allen left, so I thank you for your, for your service here, Mr. Bluff. And, uh, we have one more budget item that's been approved, and that's to get you another, another work address, so we can drive that tractor and make sure that they mow their lots there, that the council has approved for tonight, so we thank you for that. Uh, that infiltration is a big deal for us, and so, uh, we authorize them to go on and get, uh, the smoke test done as soon as it dries out, so we can start getting those holes plugged. And, uh, we gonna open up negotiations and try to see can we do something about that. That margin of difference between our regular usage and treatment of our wastewater to that spike when we get these rains, and see can we bring that down. Um, and, and we'll get that, try and keep y'all informed on that. Emergency preparedness, uh, Chief alluded to it, but we're really working on the M system, it's a national incident management system. Uh, that's both fire, police, and EMS, uh, so if something happens, go out to be in our city, we know how to, how to react. We've gone through several crises together, many of y'all up here have gone through tornadoes and mass evacuations. Uh, and so, we are in a better position than most communities, cause we have. Uh, and so we are in a better position than most communities, 'cause we have been tested. Uh, there's always, uh, the possibility of some crazy act, uh, active terrorism, active shooter. Uh, and we have to set up command, uh, uh, stations. So we come familiar with our emergency preparedness plan. Uh, we have one. Uh, if we need to upgrade, the annex is in that plan, we need to take a look at it. You can see how it comes into play in cities like Ferguson and, and Baltimore, whereas the mayor and the, and the governor and all these ones got to be on the same sheet of music when it comes to how we're gonna protect our citizens. So y'all know how we do it. We, we work cooperatively together. We work with, with the other entities in the county, uh, from the county judge's office, uh, the university, all, but, but in a major incident, the line of authority goes from the governor's office to the county judge down to the city. And so y'all have to be able to come and meet, and if you have to declare certain emergencies, you gotta be prepared to take those steps with no uncertainty. So please familiarize yourself with our emergency preparedness plan. Uh, it's a public document, so citizens, y'all need to be comfortable with that. Because in the case of emergency, you gotta know where the shelters are located. You gotta know how to evacuate this community. If we gotta get everybody out of here, how we gonna do it? Uh, so we've gone through those drills before, we need to, need to be ready for it. Uh, one of the things that we see coming up, especially with, with these, uh, different terrorist groups, you see they're recruiting more domestic folks. And we have some soft targets here. Y'all understand that. So we can't treat that lightly. We just gotta be on the Ps and Qs. And in case of a, of a mass casualty, uh, this area will be one of those crisis relocation points. So we, we have to be ready for that, to set up decontamination and do a lot of other things. So we come familiar with that. Citizens, we come familiar with it, because all of our health and safety may depend on it. We gotta move people that, uh, can't care for themselves. How we gonna get them out of harm's way? Uh, and so, uh, fire, EMS, all of it becomes in, in the play, and the police especially. Uh, community-based policing, uh, Chief Johnson has been taking the lead on that. Uh, he's led in several communities. We've been working with the apartment, uh, uh, owners. Uh, we have one apartment targeted now that we've been working with extensively. We've had several meetings with them, several, uh, working lunches with them. Uh, we will be meeting with them again this week, uh, to do a massive cleanup day and awareness day with the police officers, and, and many of y'all will be invited to come and help pick up paper and police there. This August, I think, we was gonna do it last Saturday, but it rained on us. So we'll be doing it this Saturday, uh, just picking up paper and getting to know the residents. Uh, they have increased security over there, but I think the more awareness we bring to it, uh, you can't solve everything with town discussions. You gotta get out there and get your hands dirty and pick up stuff. So we have committed to go out and do the work that needs to be done. Uh, we want to work on Eccles Street, uh, over in the Park subdivision. Uh, we have some property over there that we think could make a, a nice recreational park area. But I want to talk to the residents over there and see what you say. In each subdivision, we've identified a community area that could be a community park. But we need the residents to say, that's what they want. What do they want? Do they want gazebo or barbecue pit, or whatever over there? So we have those things coming. Um, James Beach Parkway, uh, things are moving along progressively. Those of you who have not had a chance to see the, the economic development plan from L seven Industries, uh, that plan is, is, is very active. We have, uh, uh, the opportunity to create at least, uh, fifteen to twenty jobs with this project. So I might be calling on, uh, for a call meeting to pass, uh, a resolution so we can go after, uh, economic development administration funding to run sewage and water from, uh, Business Two-Niner to Orange Road. With addition of sewage and water on James Beach Parkway, that will make that whole eastern part of our community come alive and offer a lot of economic development opportunities for the landowners, uh, that own property along there, and make those intersections hot. So, uh, just please, uh, if you can adjust your schedule, if you're able to do this, we need a super quota in order to make that happen. That means we need four council members, uh, to be here to participate. That's very, very important for us. Hopefully we can get it done, uh, here in the very near future, and I will keep you advised of that. So, uh, we have to concentrate on economic development. I'm asking four B, uh, to, uh, advertise for economic development, uh, person, uh, to bring them on board so they can do that full-time. And you have some people in this community that are qualified to do that. Uh, one of the things that is missed, uh, is that we have to be more aggressive in our economic development. Uh, I want to, uh, again, thank those that have participated in helping the city develop this charter. Uh, that does not go unnoticed. That's very much appreciated. Regardless how people feel, that's everybody's own opinion. But, uh, that committee did some enormous work, and they spent some hours up here working on it. That's not our first bite at the apple on a charter. It's been something that's been around. So, uh, I want to thank them for that. That was, that was good work, and the citizens should be proud of those, uh, commissions and committees that have been working throughout, uh, in our, I appeal to unity for Prairie View, 'cause if you notice that whatever happens that has Prairie View on it, whether it's the city or the university, that's our brand. And whether you like the individual or don't like the individual, that's our brand. And we have to sell that brand and promote that brand. So we can cut each other up, but it's like a family. We, what goes on in here, we need to make sure that we can talk to each other and communicate with each other. We can make this thing happen. So I thank y'all for your service, council members. I thank the citizens for their support. And, uh, we know that it's gonna be a whole lot better, 'cause we gonna be working together. Thank y'all, and, uh, with that, we're gonna go into the second session. Uh, the City Council, City of Prairie will convene into the second session, so it's, Section five nine one point order. Texas Public Code Personnel, now, uh, the, 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 the graduation sign.